Good afternoon, everyone. Please sit down. May I welcome members and the viewing public to this meeting of the full council which is being held in Ponsforge International Sports Centre. Please can I ask the Director of Legal and Governance to announce the housekeeping arrangements, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. To help keep everyone safe, please maintain social distancing at all times. Please wear a face covering at all times within the venue unless you have an exemption. It can be removed once seated, but you may wish to leave it on. Hand sanitizer will be available for you to use. Please remain seated as much as possible during the meeting and do not congregate around exits and entrances. Follow any signage which is provided, such as one-way systems, to help keep you safe. If you have any concerns or are unsure, please ask a member of staff. In the event of a fire alarm sounding, please take instructions from staff and stewards. The assembly point is at the front of the building. Can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode? Roaming microphones will be used for councillors wishing to speak from the main floor of the meeting room. Please allow time for the Democratic Services Officer to reach you before you begin to speak so that you can be heard clearly. The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. Photography, video and sound recording of the meeting is permitted, but the Lord Mayor does have discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting, is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information, or if a member of the public participating objects to being recorded. Any member of the public due to speak at the meeting who does not wish to be recorded should say so at the start of their speech and the Lord Mayor will suspend the permission to record their contribution. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Gillian. I shall conclude these housekeeping announcements by stating that this meeting is scheduled to finish at 5.30. I propose to adjourn the meeting for an appropriate point for the members to take a comfort break. I would just like to say, members, that I am aware that the microphone is a roving microphone and therefore that may take time out of people's speeches, so when it comes near the end of the meeting, I may take that into consideration and just allow for it for time to be taken over. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. We have an announcement that on the 5th of June, a former councillor, Mr Thornton Lambert, who served on the council from 1959 to 1973, he represented the Norton Ward. I don't think there's anyone here that remembers this gentleman, but we need to remember him in our own way. Thank you. Apologies for absence. I have apologies from Sue Alston, Sue Auckland, Penny Baker, Neil Gibson, Diane Hurst, Joe Otten and Andy Sangar. Are there any further apologies?
Yes, all, ma'am.
Thank you.
We've also got Maya Rourke, Alan Law, Mazarick Bell, Francine Johnson and Mick Rooney.
Thank you very much. Are there any declarations of interest? Did we get that?
Lord Mayor, I wish to declare a personal interest in item 10. I am on the executive of Be Best.
Thank you, councillor. We now move to item three on the agenda, Public Questions, Petitions and Other Communications. Public questions can be asked and petitions can be presented at council meetings. Questions or petitions need to be submitted two clear days in advance of the meeting, these COVID-secure meetings, to enable the public in attendance at the meetings to be managed in a secure way. For this meeting, three petitions will be presented and questions will be taken from five members of the public. A further two petitions will be received in the absence of the presenter. Ordinary petitions. Can I call upon the Chief Exec to announce petitions and may request that petitioners be brief within the time limit of three minutes? May I also request that the Chief Exec keep within the maximum time of five minutes when presenting a petition? May I also ask the questioners to be brief as possible and when asking questions and the executive member keep their response as short as possible? Thank you in advance. We have someone who's come today that wants to ask a question. I have decided to let that person ask the question, but this is exceptional, it's not something we would normally do, but in this situation, we're going to allow Chrissie Malide to ask a question at the end if there is enough time for her to do so, because there's a time limit to questions. Chief Exec.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Help if I turn the button on. I've received an electronic petition containing 2,148 signatures requesting the council to use funds to invest in an inclusive research-led lighting interventions in the city and parks. Alison Remain and Jenny Llewellyn wish to address the council and after they do so, it's recommended that the petition be referred to councillor Alison Teal, executive member for Sustainable Neighborhoods, Wellbeing, Parks and Leisure. Alison and Jenny.
Hello. Thank you for having us. We are representing our bodies, our streets. We are a grassroots campaign started during lockdown to challenge the everyday systemic culture of street harassment that we have faced as citizens of Sheffield. Since starting, we have carried out consultations, asking women and other marginalised gender groups what they want from their city in order to feel safer, and over 250 citizens have inputted their experiences of harassment in Sheffield in our participatory digital map. A key focus for us recently has been the equality and inclusivity of green spaces in the outdoor city. We are asking the council to invest in inclusive, research-led and sustainable lighting interventions in the city and its parks. Harassment can happen anywhere and at any time, but our green spaces, which are so vital for health and wellbeing, exclude many come 4pm in the winter. We believe that by harnessing the city's thriving creative sector, the universities' expertise and communities, we can provide solutions that are welcoming to all. Critically, we believe this should stem from experiential data from women and marginalised gender groups from all of Sheffield's communities via genuine consultation, co-design and participatory mapping, as there is currently a deficit in such data. The council are encouraged to propose creative and innovative bids for the Safer Streets Bound Fee Fund, and we have some actionable proposals for investment. Number one, we need public consultation embedded from the start. Tick box questionnaires created by people without lived experience serve only to reproduce issues built into our cities and institutions. In 2000, Vienna pioneered gender-included design, collecting gendered data and using co-design principles to drive inclusive solutions in the city, while the municipality of Melbourne is currently using participatory mapping to harvest experiential data. CrowdSpot, the software organisation who is powering this, are keen to work in Sheffield and we have attached their proposal to the presentation. Participatory mapping works as a live dataset of citizens' experiences and solutions that can be harnessed across organisations now and in future projects. Such data-driven design is a fundamental investment of the fund. Number two, public sexual harassment is an intersectional issue. Women of colour, disabled women and trans women experience multiple passions. Therefore, the brilliant organisations in the city that represent these lived experiences must be funded to lead in transparent decision-making. A diverse collaborative commission would be optimal to inform this change. Number three, the council must invest in research-led inclusive infrastructure. The research available by select universities globally and women's collectives linked to our presentation show, for example, how warm, layered and creative lighting, sensitive to context, increase feelings of welcome and safety in the built environment as opposed to defensive CCTV. Practical interventions must therefore heed this research. Number four, finally but fundamentally, we must tackle the root cause, the culture of misogyny. An Oste report last week stated how the normalised culture of sexual harassment must be tackled through education in schools and wider society. The council should be promoting this through public education campaigns. To conclude, Sheffield proudly characterises itself as a creative and outdoor city, but we must actively work for it to be an inclusive one. As Vienna City Council pioneered gender-inclusive design, which is now embedded into their everyday policy, Sheffield can also be a model for change in the UK. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. I now call upon councillor Teal to respond to the petition.
Thank you very much for bringing this petition to us today. I'm really, really impressed with all the work that you put into it and particularly your presentation as well. I've been through your presentation and, yeah, there's some really fascinating information in there and some very beautiful, really aesthetically pleasing ways of dealing with this lighting as well, which I would very much enjoy seeing in the city. I think everyone would as well, and the fact that it has safety benefits as well is particularly, yeah, pleasing. It'd be really, really good. Well done on getting all those comments from people. There were some, yeah, quite shocking things that were said. It's awful and, of course, I was young myself once and, you know, one of the benefits of getting older is you do get less harassment. You know, it's outrageous, isn't it? It's just awful that we continue to face these problems in 2021. I would have never imagined as a 16-year-old girl that the world would still be this way, so that's really sad. You say the root cause is misogyny and I agree, but I would think it'd be really good for us to focus on male violence. I'm very interested to look at what can we do to work with men, to look at how they are dealing with their emotions and how they deal with alcohol and, you know, a lot of the things that drive this behaviour are in men's hands. And so we need to look at this as a whole community and see how we can solve this problem. This most definitely is not women's problem and we're willing, because we're very kind this way, we're willing to share the problem with men, but it's men that need to make substantial changes to make us all feel safe in society. I'm looking forward to meeting with you. We've already spoken about this. We'll have a meeting with some officers and talk about what ideas have you presented already that could be practicably implemented as soon as possible. Yeah, I'm really, really pleased you've done this and congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Teal. Chief Exec?
Thank you. I've received a joint electronic and paper petition containing 858 signatures objecting to the closure of Norfolk Park doctor surgery. Kim McNastor from Norfolk Park Tare wishes to address the council and it's recommended that the petition is referred to councillor George Lindas Hammond, executive member for Health and Social Care. Kim has also submitted for public questions on this topic and if Kim's okay with that, I suggest it would be helpful if you could ask your questions as part of your address in addition. Thank you.
We're here today to present the petition from the people across Norfolk Park and surrounding areas against the proposals to close down our doctor's surgery. Our doctor's surgery is well-used and loved by the community, is part of a purpose-built health centre that is only eight years old. It has some of the most modern facilities in the city. Many residents have pointed out that it is one of the best-rated surgeries in the city also. The strength of community feeling was felt earlier this month when we came together to stage a protest outside the surgery. As a community, we have united against these proposals. We understand that it is claimed that the surgery is not viable because they cannot attract GPs to work in a deprived community with patients with complex health problems. It is not fair that the people of Norfolk Park fall foul to this postcode lottery. Everyone, no matter wealth, background or location, deserves access to quality and convenient health services. Elder residents have voiced concerns that they will struggle to get to the proposed other surgery. If these proposals go ahead, the effects will be devastating on the health of our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your petition. Will you now ask your questions, please?
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Norfolk Park has lost shops, buses, dentists, community space and hundreds of council houses. Now we face a closure of our GP practice, which was purposely built for us all just eight years ago. The old master plan for Norfolk Park said that we should now have hundreds of new properties, shops, services and a community space. What does the council propose for the future of our estates and when will previous agreements be honoured? That's it. That's it.
Thank you. I now call upon councillor Lindas Hammond.
Thank you so much both for presenting this petition and the questions today. That first questioner, I think perhaps a colleague of mine might want to respond to it afterwards in terms of that wider masterplan aim, because that's obviously not directly to do with the health and social care elements that you talked to, but I think it's really, really important that you have brought today this incredibly strong feeling about what it would mean to you and your community if we were to lose this vital surgery at the heart of your community. I know that, as you say, you're MP, but also Jack, Ben and Sophie, your councillors, have been really, really active on making sure we can retain doctors' facilities and all the other health facilities that goes on at a place like that in the current location. I think for us as a council, we're really, really happy to help in whatever way we can to help make your views clear, to talk to our partners in the CCG who are going through the process at the moment to consult and make it really, really clear what it is about is keeping access for local people to valued services. I don't think it matters, and I don't think you think it matters, exactly which surgery's name's on the door, we need services and your valued local doctors with you. And that's what I will commit, and this council can commit, to working as hard as possible with you, the community, and your councillors and your MP, to make the argument for retaining, as you say, in that great building. I think in terms of, and we will do what we can, I'd love to really meet with you guys, there may be another colleague might want to answer that specific question about the masterplan for area.
Thank you, councillor. The councillor that needs to answer that question is not able to do so. Is someone else going to? Leader of the council will answer that question.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, Kim, for the petition and the questions today from Helen. I was born very, very near from Norfolk Park, bottom of East Bank Road was where I kind of came from, so I know the area quite well and obviously we just met outside discussing that. Norfolk Park, around like my ward in Manor Castle, has seen a massive development and the masterplan has increased from where it originally were. And part of that is not only building houses, but about building services and jobs and doctor's surgeries, school places etcetera that go along with developing through that masterplan. We want to see that rolled out. We're also commissioning the local area committees, where your local councillors, who I know you've been working with and obviously outside, and thank you for a very snug fitting t-shirt earlier on, but who have worked tirelessly with you on this, and we're devolving down to those communities, those powers to help influence the communities that they live in. Obviously, George has given you an offer to meet with him. Same with myself, if we can get in there with your local councillors to try and way forward on this, because I suspect you will not be the only community that are facing these pressures. So I look forward to catching up later. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've received a petition containing 58 signatures requesting the council to stop the demolition of the outhouses on Atlantic Road and to either repair or replace them with a suitable alternative. Alan Gravel wishes to address the council and it's recommended that the petition is referred to councillor Paul Wood, executive member for Housing Roads and Waste Management. Mr Gravel?
I'm Alan Gravel. Asking the council, if possible, not to demolish the outhouses, help us to rebuild them, because some of our residents, especially the ones who lives on the top floors, some of these, have actually got young children, especially on my block, got young children and they use their outhouses to keep their prams in, save them to try looking up and down the stairs, about four, five flights of stairs. Our block, yesterday I actually helped one of my residents repair his property, the outhouses, what the council supposed to have done, and all they did were just boarded it up. Took us four hours to repair it and all it wants now is just new roof and just some bits on the fronts, then we will have a new decent outhouses. And if the council wants, instead of them to do a lot of the repairs, if the light trail pulls out, some of our residents will actually repair them themselves, or if they want to put, say, so much a month on extra onto the rent, we will pay that, so at least then they have got the money through the years to do any repairs on the outhouses, what we have at the same time, because they turned around and told us we don't pay out on them, so we would pay so much a month like they do on the garages in the area to help for the repairs after this one through the years. That is more what I'm putting through for the rest of them and all, same thing. Each of us would like to keep them, so we can actually keep some of our people's stuff in them, like the push bikes for the kids. And if the outhouses get knocked down, it's not going to be safe to any of the kids to play in the area, because they're not one round the corner and said they were putting the fencing up, they knocked the outhouses down and just left the area blank. There's still no fencing being put up and that's about four months ago they did that. Okay, I'll leave that with you.
Thank you. I will refer your petition to the leader of the council. Can you speak on this?
Thanks, Lord Mayor. It took me a bit by surprise, so sorry about that. Can we get your details and we'll meet up later if you don't mind, sir? Oh, sorry.
Sorry, Paul. Sorry, councillor Wood. I've got his apologies. So councillor Wood isn't able to speak, but he will revisit the decision and get back to you. Thank you. Finally, I've had two petitions for which we don't have speakers, so I'm going to join these together as they both should be referred to councillor Douglas Johnson. So firstly, I've received a petition containing 92 signatures requesting the removal of double yellow lines on Hicks Street in Neeps End. And secondly, I've received an electronic petition containing seven signatures requesting a pelican crossing on Crooks. And both of these recommend that the petitions are referred to councillor Douglas Johnson, executive member for Climate Change, Environment and Transport. Councillor Johnson?
Councillor Johnson?
Thank you. Perhaps not much I can say, given there's no one here, but I will take those away and ask our officers about them. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. We now move to questions from the public. Can you come to the mic, please, and ask your question?
Thank you for this opportunity. My theme today is heritage. I may well return to my previous themes on future occasions. This is about Bridgehousers Footbridge at Neeps End or Kellam area. Now, just very briefly, a bit of background, because I'm aware that some people here won't have heard of this heritage gem. This was Sheffield's first iron bridge built in 1795, refurbished 1841. The great flood destroyed it in 1864 and it was rebuilt the following year. It had its last major refurbishment in 1921. The Friends of Bridgehousers Footbridge carried out some restoration, installed interpretation boards and historical information, and the then Lord Mayor, Talib Hussain, reopened the bridge in September 2015. Since then, a group of volunteers has maintained both the bridge and the site surrounding it. This part of our heritage is now in need of further attention and the removal of the blockage at the southern end, which was part of the inner ring road construction, I believe that was about the year 2000. My question is this: please, would the council, A, consider some sponsorship in the centenary year of the last major renovation to enable the Friends group to improve, preserve and interpret this historic gem and its surrounding green area? And B, finally, would the council please investigate the feasibility of reopening the footbridge for pedestrian use? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your question. May I call upon councillor Douglas Johnson, executive member for Climate Change, Environment and Transport, to respond to the questioner, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, Russell, for bringing that. I do know the bridge. I didn't realise it was actually the centenary year of its last refurbishment. That's quite an interesting step forward. So in terms of sponsorship, I don't know. So what I've said I'd do is I will talk to councillor Teal, who's one of the other executive members responsible for potentially things like this, and no doubt we'll go away and talk to officers about what can be done, so we're not making promises. It'd be good to make a feature of it. And what I do know is that the Friends group there has done a good job in a very understated way of making that little feature in what otherwise is a big traffic island. So that's very good. Secondly, on the way of opening up to foot traffic, I think that's a really interesting idea and it's something that I've been looking at a number of times, but it is a very difficult job, partly because, A, it is in the middle of a traffic island, as things are at the moment, and also because there's a huge gap in levels there. It's several feet, at the moment is like a gable end of a wall, and so that's not a particularly easy one. So I don't think there's any current plans to do that, but because I often walk past it, I'm not going to forget that one. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. The next questioner, Ruth Huddard contacted the council this morning to say that she wanted to withdraw her first question and she's asking that a written question, she's asking the council to give her a written reply to the second question and Mr Richard Axelbait will ask the third question. So I call upon Mr Richard- So I call upon Mr. Richard Axelby to come to the microphone, please.
Hello. I'm not Ruth Hubbard. My name's Richard Axelby. I'm an academic researcher who normally is involved in a team that works around the world. We look at political communication and political engagement in six different locations, and one of those locations, I'm very happy to say, is my home city of Sheffield. But that's not why I'm here today. I'm here to ask a question on behalf of Ruth Hubbard, who wasn't able to attend in person, so she asked me to ask this question in her place. I just want to stress, though, that I'm not here representing It's Our City, and these are Ruth's words and not mine. So these are the words, and there's quite a lot of them, so I'll read it out. We are the largest city and the first of the core cities to be transitioning to the more democratic, modern committee governance system. Sheffielders mounted the biggest ever campaign seen anywhere for a change of governance, and many others across the country are now considering or embarking on similar action. In the face of an entrenched refusal by the then council ruling group to listen and change itself, it was citizens and communities working together who researched, initiated, developed, networked, informed, drove, delivered and resoundingly won our change of governance referendum. In light of this, will the council commit to ensuring that community and stakeholder voices play a central and powerful role as full and equal participants in shaping, developing, designing and designing the governance change required, in polity building and to produce a new council constitution? In the context of what has happened, wouldn't anything other than that be rather odd? The reports and recommendations you have received today seek to reduce change to a technocratic and party political brokering exercise, but the change sought by Sheffield citizens is not firstly technical and procedural, and our shared democratic life is much bigger than party politics. The change voted for is not firstly technical and procedural, i.e. about filling in legalistic and technical government statutory templates, it is democratic, real, substantive and meaningful. And this is a vital starting point if we intend to deliver actual change. With all due respect, our council has not yet demonstrated it has thought about and understood what this means, so we want to work on a widely shared and explicit understanding. I, and by that I mean Ruth, note that the new council leader or deputy leader have not yet been in touch with It's Our City following the referendum result. Will the council think again? By rejecting or postponing the report today, I cannot see anything by way of preparatory work that is stopped from happening, but the report is premature and mistakenly orientated towards and reduced to technocratic thinking and requirements. It does not look like a council moving on, but maybe seeking to return to business as usual. But as usual, here I am, here I am, at public questions, asking my question and trying to engage council. I'm requesting the leader or deputy leader and representatives of the other political parties to meet with a group of us as community stakeholders supporting change soon, to reflect on and discuss productive, substantive and inclusive ways forward, the resources that the council might be seeking to put in place to support significant and lasting change, and to develop a shared understanding of the best ways of working together. I would be grateful if you could let me know who to liaise with over diary availability. Finally, as an addendum to the question submitted on Monday, I am pleased to say that as of yesterday, Tuesday, the deputy leader has made contact and emailed me. By me, I mean Ruth. So those are Ruth's questions. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to put these questions to you on Ruth's behalf.
Thank you for your question. May I call upon councillor Julie Growcott, deputy leader and executive member of Community Engagement and Governance, to respond, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Axelby, for bringing the question and reading it out on behalf of Ms. Hubbard today. I actually agree that the report presented today is a technical report, because the transition to a new system of governance involves a significant amount of technical work to be undertaken in order to actually manage the change that is required by May 2022. The report explains that its purpose is to ensure that the transitional committees can start to function and establish a cross-party governance committee that can guide the transition and determine how the public and stakeholders are engaged and involved in the process this year. We see this as an opportunity to start properly engaging with citizens in helping to design the services we provide. We've already introduced the local area committees and are committed to making the community voice represented across the city. The challenge for this year is to come up with a system that maximises the transparency of public involvement and the decision-making across the council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Growcott. May I now call upon Mr. Crossland to ask us two questions, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor and councillors. Back in March, I think it was, I presented a petition asking the council to look at installing a speed camera and to tackle speeding in Mosborough. Since then, I've been lucky enough to join councillor Gayle Smith and the police on a community speed check in the area. During their operation, the police actually caught 47 speeding cars. So I'd like to ask the council what progress has been made, as speeding is still a major issue in the area. Shall I ask the second one now?
Ask both your questions, Mr. Crossland, please.
Thank you. So my second question is about off-road vehicles. I live in Westfield, and my local green space is regularly torn up by off-road vehicles. And I know this is a frustration shared across the area, because in Waterford, the local football club had to move because the playing field was torn up. So I'd like to ask what the council intends to do to tackle off-road vehicles and protect our precious green spaces.
Thank you for your questions. May I call upon councillor Douglas Johnson, executive member for Climate Change, Environment and Transport, to respond, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, Curtis. That's really glad to hear there's an ongoing campaign there. So the note I've got from officers is pointing out that there's been an election since March, which you're probably aware of. There's probably some mention of speeding and traffic in the areas, bit of an election campaign. Actually, it's there because, of course, it's an important issue, and it's something that is very visible and has real consequences. So I'm glad it is an ongoing issue. So the note I've got here from officers is, I must admit, I'm not familiar with that area in the city, is that, as you know, officers have previously considered the potential for speed limit gateway entry treatments and speed indicating devices to be provided, with a view to these potentially being developed as local SIL-funded projects, as community infrastructure levy. As you can tell from my voice, you'll be more familiar with exactly what's happened there than I am, so I'm going to say I'm going to liaise with the local ward members, Lord Mayor, and we will see what's happening with to progress those measures and get more of a feel for what's going on there. On the second one, on the antisocial behaviour by churning out green spaces, again, completely agree this is an important issue. These is more of a police matter, as you know, because you're out there and you've been talking to them. So the note I have here is, of course, saying the council works closely with South Yorkshire Police, but in terms of the specifics, I think I'm being asked to ask you to send in the details of the specific instance to, I don't know if you've got contact details for on the office there, and we can then have a look at what can be done. So not make any specific promises, but other than to look into it a bit. So I hope that's progress. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. The next questioner is Mark Smith. We will arrange for written answers to Mr. Smith's questions after the meeting. Will Chrissie Malidi come to the microphone, please? Please keep your questions brief.
I'd like to thank the Lord Mayor and the Democratic Services staff for facilitating this reasonable adjustment. Let me speak today on behalf of survivors and victims of conversion therapy in all of its forms. I'd also like to thank Mark Suter, who's here with me today, who's one of the victims and survivors of this form of therapy, which was conducted by the Church of England as part of the New Wine Conference at its early inception. We have thousands of people within our community who are survivors and are victims of conversion therapies here in Sheffield, and we've been dealing with them over a number of years. This is not a new subject for us. I have raised it repeatedly with the local authority over a number of years, including with senior officers and also with some politicians, to no avail. The question that I'm posing today has been formulated by some of the victims and survivors, and is as follows. Conversion therapy in all its forms is a safeguarding issue. Local authorities have a statutory duty in partnership with health to safeguard and promote the wellbeing of local people and communities. The six principles of safeguarding are empowerment, prevention, proportionality, protection, partnership and accountability. In addition, people should be supported and encouraged to make their own decisions. Prevention of abuse and harm should take place along with the necessity to take action before the abuse or harm occurs. Everyone is accountable to safeguard and should be working together to safeguard people from harm, including members of our LGBT plus also the diverse gender communities. With the above in mind, along with the council's public sector equality duty, what are Sheffield City Council doing to safeguard people from conversion therapy in all its forms, and what action is being taken to designate Sheffield as a conversion therapy free city? We have members of our community from all different ages who have wanted to die by suicide, others who have died by suicide, others who are self-harming because of this form of conversion therapy in all of its diversity, which has taken place under our roof, and it's something that's abhorrent and shouldn't be taking place in Sheffield. We are a diverse community and one that prides itself upon supporting human rights and equality and inclusion, and this is a very serious matter that's been left to prevail in the city. And I would plead with this local authority to step forward and to be the first conversion therapy free city in the UK. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak to you all today. Thank you.
You're welcome. Could I ask councillor Jane Dunn to respond, please?
Thank you, Chrissie, and thank you for the question, which I didn't get sight of, but you eloquently put forward. I personally do not support conversion therapy, and I know that my colleagues don't. I did see your article in the paper, and we don't commission any conversion therapy as a council. Any issues you have, please forward them on to me, and I, with my colleague councillor Lindas Hammond, will make sure they're all investigated, and we will discuss the options that you've actually put forward as a group as well. But I can't, you know, I support everything that you've said. It's absolutely abhorrent, and it doesn't belong in a city like Sheffield. It doesn't belong anywhere in the world, does it? So completely support you on that. But as I said, you said you've got a number of cases. If you could forward them on, then I will make sure that they go through, which I know that you do extremely well. But it is important, as the local authority, that we have full sight of those as well, to make sure that everything has been done correctly. But thank you so much for bringing it, and I understand you've been poorly as well, so I hope you get well soon. Take care.
Thank you, councillor Dunn. That concludes this item of business. We've been asked to move item nine to be the next item on the agenda. I move that? Can I have it seconded?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. Oh, yeah. I just need to explain that we're replacing item six with item nine, and so item six will be at the back of the agenda. Does everybody follow that? Okay, thank you. So we move to item nine. Let me find it. Wait a minute. Notice of motion regarding making Sheffield even safer for all. There is a maximum time limit for this item, 25 minutes. May I call upon councillor Mary Lee to move the motion? You may speak for up to three minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, I want to emphasise at the start that Sheffield is one of the safest cities in Britain. However, we know we are not without our problems of antisocial behaviour and other forms of criminal activity. But today, the focus is on women and girls and the problems they experience on the streets. We have heard from a group of young women today talk about the harassment perpetrated against women and young girls, and the possible steps we can take to reduce this type of behaviour. And whilst we can consider this today, while we consider this motion, let us reflect during the debate on all the forms of abuse women experience, physical, sexual and emotional, both in the home and on the streets, in whatever form it takes. Because it seems to me that it is all driven by a belief, by some, that it is permissible to behave in this way towards women. And whilst we have come a long way over the years in changing attitudes and behaviour, many forms of abuse are still underreported and even tolerated, and more needs to be done to both change attitudes and make changes on a practical level. Lord Mayor, the young women who have come here today do not see themselves as victims. Whatever their own experience, they will know many women who have experienced threatening behaviour on the streets, but they have decided to take it upon themselves to take action on behalf of other women, and they have come up with a series of practical, creative and pragmatic proposals which can help deal with the harassment women are at risk of facing on our streets. They are now asking us, as Sheffield City councillors, to take stock of their proposals, to acknowledge the issues and offer our support. Their current project, Safer Parks After Dark, aims to ensure that public places are welcoming and safe from street harassment. They are asking that we work together as a council and as councillors with other organisations across the city, schools, the voluntary sector, community and the Police and Crime Commissioner, to improve public safety of women and young girls. Specifically, they are asking that we support a bid to the Safer Streets Fund, which has a focus on the safety of women. Any bid to this fund is more likely to be successful when we work with the community, particularly with the young women who have brought the petition to the council today. I am asking at the end of this debate that we fully commit to supporting their aims, to commit to our intolerance of harassment and abuse of women, that we resolve as a council to work with the Police and Crime Commissioner, with the relevant organisations I've mentioned, and the community, to make our communities and streets safe, and in particular to support a bid to the Safer Street Fund. Lord Mayor, I hope everyone can support this motion today.
Councillor. To Lord Mayor, councillor Richards, to second the motion. You may speak for up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Every woman here will have lived experience of harassment, whether in work or in public spaces. Councillors, officers, members of the public, all women have lived experience of this, and it's been like this since our school days. I went on my first Reclaim the Night march in 1978 after a friend was raped. I was on a march down Fleet Street in 1982, thousands of us with flaming torches demanding that newspapers take this issue seriously. I was on a Reclaim the Night march in Rotherham in 2018. Forty-three years and still marching. I'm 63 now, and I'm tired. I'm tired of waiting for it to get better, for the words that people use to say, oh, yeah, it's bad, isn't it? But not willing to change attitudes or do anything else. I don't want my granddaughter to be marching in 40 years' time demanding- marching in 40 years' time, demanding the same thing that I've been calling for all my politically active life. This is a practical motion with practical ways to improve our public spaces for women and girls. Let's just get on with it. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
There are two proposed amendments, and these are numbers seven and eight on the list of amendments circulated at this meeting. Can I call upon councillor Sophie Thornton to move the amendment number seven? You may speak for up to two minutes. This is councillor Thornton's maiden speech, so I hope you'll all respect that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm wanting to propose this amendment not only to highlight the importance of incredibly warm and well-layered lighting, as has been highlighted so brilliantly by petitioners this morning, this afternoon, but also to highlight the importance of co-production in this process. As a young woman in this city, as much as the motion does say that we like to see ourselves as one of the safest cities, this is not my experience, and nor is it the experience of so many young women and girls across the city too, and other marginalised genders. Now, as a woman, by virtue of who I am, I have been harassed, I have been catcalled, I have been solicited, I have not felt safe whilst walking home in this city. I can see it so clearly when I go for walks late at night to the shops with my partner, my male partner, who I am always looking over my shoulder, I'm making sure that I wear appropriate footwear, I'm making sure that I plan our routes based on what is well-lit, and he doesn't have to think about those things. Now, young women, girls and other marginalised genders experience this all the time, and it's even more intersectionally layered with women of colour and people who have disabilities, and trans women too. Now, this is something that, when we're looking at consultation for an open, honest and transparent council, we are wanting to make sure that we do it with them in the process. Nothing about people without people, making sure that their voices are heard in the whole design process. So we're not talking amongst ourselves as a council, we're properly reaching out to the communities that this directly affects. And this is what this amendment is all about, is ensuring that we co-produce our motions, that we make sure that our city listens. Now, I'm hoping that we can listen actively. I've said a little bit about my experience, I was half petitioners earlier today, and I hope that we can start by actively listening, by listening to my experience and the experience of other women and young girls, co-producing them in the process, and making sure that we are actively listening by supporting this amendment. Thank you.
Congratulations, councillor Thornton, on your maiden speech. I doubt the council will be so kind to you in other days. May I call upon councillor Shafak Mohammed to second the amendment, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And I want to start by congratulating councillor Sophie Thornton on a fantastic speech, and I'm sure there's many more speeches like that to come. Lord Mayor, it's not only important for the likes of councillor Thornton Lee or Richard to speak out against it, but also as men to actually support this campaign. And I want to declare an interest, you know, I've got a wife, I've got a young daughter, and you know what, I also am concerned about the safety of women, young and old, about when they go out to socialise, when they go out to shop, or in case of my daughter, when she goes to school. It's something that's close to my heart, it's something that I tried to champion in my brief seven months in Brussels, when I actually served on the Gender Equality Women's Rights Committee, and violence against women was a big issue for us, not only in Europe but right across the world. And I think, as a city, a very progressive city, a city in Sheffield that we pride ourselves of being a city of sanctuary, we also want to make sure that actually all members of our society, and particularly women, are able to go about their normal lives without the fear. And that's where we come into it as a city council. In particular, our open public spaces are one of our key assets, and we want all sections of our society to be able to enjoy those. So it's really important that our parks and open spaces are made as safe as possible by design. Some of that may involve lighting, but there are other options. And I suggest, Lord Mayor, that we work with campaign groups like the ladies that are present here today, but also work actually through the local community, whatever you call them, local action committees, community assemblies. So actually, local members who know their parks and open spaces more better than anyone else, actually are involved in ensuring that those spaces are safe and accessible, and therefore people don't fear walking through a park, but actually enjoy going walking through a park. So thank you, Lord Mayor. Let's all support both the motion but also our amendment.
May I call upon councillor Carl Toome Rivers to move amendment number eight, please? You may speak for up to two minutes.
Thank you. Lord Mayor, thank you very much. And thank you to the two councillors who put this motion together. As you can see, I'm a woman of colour. And that makes you think that intersectionality should be in this motion and everything that we think about. I wrote the two names of two black women who were killed in a park. Lord Mayor, last June 2020, Nicola Selman and Pippa Henry were stabbed to death at a park in Wembley. That's where I grew up. These two black women, who were sisters, did not receive as much attention as Sarah has done. That should tell you something. We need to think about safety, but we really need to think about what makes us people, humans, is our diversity, identity and intersectionality. And on that point, I'd like to thank the two young ladies who presented today, who have mentioned this. They've mentioned race, they've mentioned diversity, they mentioned me, they mentioned different people, people like me, people who look like me. A woman who should feel safe. I'm a mother of four boys. I'm teaching them to respect women, look after women, and make sure that they are safe around them. But I still carry a rape alarm. So that, our amendment is to support the motion. We brought race in there, and we don't want that removed, because that is my intersectionality and these two women and women like me. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Can I call upon councillor Martin Phipps to second the amendment, please?
Congratulations to Sophie Thornton on her first speech. And thank you to our bodies, our streets, for all of their work and all who have contributed to it in the mapping, petition and proposals, and all who have worked on the Safer Parks After Dark campaign and the Parklight Pullout in the Star. The safety of all women and girls and everyone in Sheffield is incredibly important. In seconding this friendly amendment, we are welcoming and fully supporting the motion and the Lib Dem amendment. We are putting forward supportive actions that as a council we can take to address male violence, misogyny and racism, to help make our streets safer for all. I agree with Shafak that men must stand up and call out misogyny and sexism where we see it. We want the council to work with organisations on addressing male violence and harassment. There is a wealth of knowledge in organisations working on this, such as White Ribbon UK, and as a council, we could help lead the way in working with them as an organisation ourselves, as well as encouraging others to work with them to help address male violence in Sheffield. We want the council to introduce further education to schools, such as the Council of Europe's Sexism, See It, Name It, Stop It, and on addressing racism also. So I'm happy to second this motion, and I hope that everyone supports the motion and all the amendments. Thank you.
We now move to the debate. Councillor Mark Jones?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations to councillor Thornton for her maiden speech. I'm going to create a bit of a disturbing image for everyone, and I apologise now. Many, many years ago, in Liverpool, I went to the 25th anniversary of a play. And in that play, it's renowned for people getting dressed up and in drag and such like. So I went along with my size nines on, with my Basque, and it's a disturbing image, and I apologise for that. But one thing that I can say is that at the end of the evening, I was actually groped. Someone came along and touched my bum. I wasn't sure whether I was supposed to feel grateful or otherwise on that one. But I did slip off my size nines, which were heels, and I did get ready for a fight. And as a male, I'm kind of reflecting on that now, thinking that if I couldn't go out once to the theatre to see a presentation without getting harassed, how can it be like for women who have to go put up with this behaviour and this treatment on a daily basis? So sorry for the imagery, it's probably not the best place to go, please don't imagine it. But also, it is really important that men do stand up and take ownership of this issue. As a father with two daughters, I've been struck for many, many years that my daughters can't go out because their friends don't go out, because their parents don't feel safe for them to go out. We need our streets to be safe for my daughters, for everyone's daughters, for all our children. And in supporting this, I don't believe there's going to be any dissent from cross-party of any nature in thinking that our streets must be safe for women. I'm also a father of a young boy, and if the streets aren't safe for my daughters, how can they go out? They will certainly not be safe for my young boy. So by making the streets safe for all women, for all people, we will make this city safe for everybody. And in that aim itself, we must achieve this. And I'm gutted to hear the impact that Shon Ed has to see for many, many years. And I would love to support all amendments in this, and I really want to see Sheffield come to a place where we can all walk our streets safely, especially women. And finally, Brunswick Park, we put a massive investment in there, I can see the red light, and I thank the Lord Mayor for the indulgence here. We put money in making that park more accessible to children. The reason that people won't use that park is because many, many years ago, a young woman was grabbed from the undergrowth by a man. So what's the point in us trying to make our parks safer and more accessible to our children if people do not want to use them because they fear that someone's going to assault their children while using that park? Thank you for bringing this motion, it is really much appreciated. Thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Jones. Councillor Woodcraft?
Thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations to councillor Thornton on an excellent speech. This issue that's been raised, I mean, this affects us all. It's not a women's issue, it affects absolutely everyone here. It's not safe for women, it's not safe for men. And, you know, I re-echo what has already been said on that. I mean, I share the horror of violence directed towards women, and it's clear that physical violence is much more of a male problem, whether that be directed towards women or even other men. And there are fairly well-understood biological causes why this should be, but that in no way excuses this behaviour. It's only a very tiny minority of men that behave in this way, but it has a major impact on the lives of others, especially women. So are there any actions that we can take to remedy this? There are so many associated issues involved. They include the role of the internet, upbringing, television, cinema, what we see in our newspapers and magazines, so much more. And deprivation adds to the stresses faced by families, which can exacerbate some of these issues. In this council, we have to grapple with the licensing of sex shops and venues, these largely objectivised women. And I find myself desperately split as to whether we're better to licence these, to keep a watchful eye on these activities, or to force them underground by banning them. I don't know the answer. In planning our city, we have opportunities, though. There are places that many of us would avoid after dark or at less busy times. There are places where attackers can lie in wait. We need to adopt a safe-by-design approach to new developments, and this should be incorporated in the local plan. Nevertheless, we should not shy away from tackling the difficult causal factors that cause especially men to turn to violence. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Davidson?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Most of what needs to be said has been said, and, oh, congratulations, Sophie, on your maiden speech. There's nothing really I would disagree with, but the thing that really comes to mind is some of these reports that we've been hearing about the access to pornography and also to violent video games that younger and younger children are having access to. And I think that is somewhere where we have got to start to do something about. And I think it's perfectly possible to do something about that. And I think that it does have a psychological effect, but the pornography is one of the real problem areas, because people think that sex is automatically available. When I was coming down the road, I saw this girl with a t-shirt on, and she had a yellow band which said, "Do not cross". And I thought, yes, she's hitting hard with humour, or semi-humour. And I think we've got to do whatever we can to get across to people that this kind of behaviour is just not on, it will not do. And we've got to try and improve right from the very, very early ages in children, and teach them that they have to look after each other. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Wilson?
Thank you for that. Yeah, I wasn't going to speak today, but I just wanted to say I completely support the petition and most of what has been said today. Although I just would like to pull something up that was said earlier about it being a tiny minority of men. I don't think that most women in this room, or women that I know, would ever believe that. I probably think that most, if not all, women I know and have ever known have been sexually harassed, assaulted or raped to some extent. And if that's happening to every woman and girl that I know, and I can see women round the room nodding, that is not a tiny minority of men. So I just wanted to correct that point. Thank you.
Councillor Turpin?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Congratulations, councillor Thornton, that was an excellent speech. And every time I've heard you speak, you've been very eloquent, and I look forward to the rest of your time here and what you have to say. Hearing these stories, and it's not the first time I've heard the stories, such as from Shon Ed, and nothing seems to have changed in such a long time. And we celebrate our progress and our intellectualism, and yet this is still just the same. We all have daughters, sisters, mothers, and so on. During the recent election campaign, I was out delivering leaflets and came out of a garden path, and there was two teenage girls in school uniform walking past. I let them pass, they politely thanked me. We carried on walking, and I followed them probably 20 yards behind down the road. And a builders' van drove past and beeped the horn and started shouting out the window. And it was just horrific. And then the van pulled up about 50, 100 yards further down the road, and I thought, right, get ready, because I'm either going to have to film something or fight someone. But anyway, that didn't happen, unfortunately. But it was a middle-aged fat plasterer jumped out of the van, and I thought, what place in your mind do you think it's all right to catcall, catcall girls in school uniform? It's just disgusting. I just wanted to also mention that men are also most likely to be attacked by men, as opposed to women. And it really does seem that that's where the problem lies. I hope that we can implement all of the suggestions in the motion and the amendment. And it's not only about building infrastructure, although I really do support that and the suggestions from the petitioners earlier. I think that we really have to work to upskill the population, and we can do that, and we can start by doing that in Sheffield. And let's see if we can change that culture where it is acceptable to be misogynistic, to be sexist, to be violent. Thank you.
Councillor Shaw?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, and congratulations to my colleague councillor Thornton on her excellent maiden speech, and to the petitioners who brought this very important issue to counsel, and to the proposers of important issue to council, and to the proposers of all the motions and amendments before us. In the items before us, I mean, the tragedy of Sarah Everard is mentioned. What people may not be aware is that since Sarah's murder, at least 30 other women have been killed by men. Some have been mentioned already, but it's just a shocking scale of the issue that's belied by the ones that make it to add to the news. And also, we're talking a lot about stranger danger, basically. But let's not forget that a lot of assault attacks come from people known to victims, friends, and family, spouses. This is not just a tiny minority of men out there hiding in the bushes, lacking in danger. It is all around, and we must open our eyes to the scale of the problem throughout society. It might just be a tiny number that, you know, present themselves, but, you know, it's a very widespread issue. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Out of time, I'm afraid, on that item, but I'm going to call upon councillor Mary Lee to use her right of reply.
Thank you, thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like as well to congratulate Sophie Thornton on her maiden speech. It was really good, and she's added some really good ideas to the original motion. I just want to say councillor Richards spoke about how long she's been campaigning for women's safety, and she's still speaking up. And these young women today have had now to come along and take forward the baton, which tells us something about how far we have come and how far we need to go. But I am very pleased that our fellow male councillors have spoken and supported this motion. Men still hold most of the power, positions of power in this country, which makes their support fundamental to the changes we need to make. By this, I mean attitudes, as well as the practical measures that deterrence, the practical measures that we can make with the deterrents we want to use. But fundamentally, tis about attitudes, values, and beliefs, and what is acceptable, and what line should not be crossed. It should not be down to women to say this is the line. Men should know where the line is and accept that, and support that, and support women. It's pleasing, therefore, that the council has come together today to support the motion and bring forward some amendments which will add to it and add to its richness. So thank you very much, and I hope the young women over there will be pleased, and we call upon them, obviously, to work with us now in taking this forward. And obviously, we'll work with Alison, who's now in a position to take this forward. Thank you.
I am now going to move to the vote on amendment seven, moved by councillor Sophie Thornton. Are members happy to vote on the amendment as a whole or on each separate paragraph? Councillor Dams?
Lord Mayor, it gives me great pleasure to say that we're going to support both of the amendments.
Thank you. All those in favour of amendment seven, please raise your hand. Thank you. That's carried. I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number eight by councillor Caltum Rivers. All those in favour? Thank you. Yes, I think both those were unanimous. Thank you, colleagues. Any against? Any abstentions? Thank you. That's carried. I'm going to do that now. Thank you. I'm now going to move to the vote on the substantive motion. Are members happy to vote on the motion as a whole or on each separate paragraph? All those in favour of the substantive motion, please raise your hand. That's been carried unanimously. Thank you. We're now going to item five on the agenda. Can I find it? This item, item five, members' questions. Are there any questions on urgent business that are not questions of urgent, sorry, there are no questions of urgent business? Supplementary questions, written answers from the executive members, sorry, to questions submitted by members in advance of the meeting have been emailed to all members and circulated in this venue. And this item of business is to provide an opportunity for members of the council who had submitted questions to ask supplementary questions for each question asked. Yes, page three. Councillor Shifak?
Thank you, thank you, Lord Mayor. Sorry, I can't catch your eye like we're normally able to. This is a question to councillor Fox. Question one in particular, councillor Fox. I'm not asking you to comment on the situation itself, but I've asked councillor Johnson a similar question, and he's been able to give me a date of the 21st of April as the first time he knew about the issues that Simon Ogden raised. A simple question, when did you actually know? When were you informed about them?
Lord Mayor, I have nothing further to add than my statement.
Thank you. Councillor Shifak?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I turn to page six, please, Lord Mayor? My question there is around these non-disclosure agreements, and I am minded of another question by councillor Marouf that actually, we have an answer which says that 54 people in the last five years have signed these non-disclosure agreements. And my simple question is, out of those 54, how many are linked to the Streets Ahead contract? It's a pretty simple question. If you don't have the answers today, councillor Fox, I'm happy to have it in writing.
Councillor Fox?
Lord Mayor, didn't hear you. Which is one of the first, isn't it? Sorry, Lord Mayor. Yes, I'll get that in writing for you, councillor Mohammed.
Thank you. Yes, continue, councillor Shifak.
Lord Mayor, it's question nine, and it's about these concessory fares, in particular the Freedom Riders. I'm just asking councillor Fox whether he's aware that actually the PTE has been underspending on its concessory budgets, and would he agree to write to Dan Jarvis to reconsider the lights of this money that's not been spent, that could be spent, because other local authorities are funding this sort of free travel for our pensioners?
Councillor Fox?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yes, I'll write and I'll sort raise it at the next combine authority meeting.
Thank you, councillor Fox. Page five, councillor Leverie?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations, Sophie, on your maiden speech. Okay. Question one on youth services. I asked if you would present the final draft plans to the Children, Young People and Family Support Scrutiny Committee. Will you do that, so we can comment and possibly return any comments we've got back to the Cooperative Executive? That's the first question.
Councillor Fox?
Sorry, Lord Mayor, I didn't catch that question. I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch it.
I'll ask that you ask that question again, councillor Leverie, please.
Yeah. You're at the stage with the youth services proposals that we're at final draft phase. Will you be bringing them to the Children, Young People and Family Support Scrutiny Committee and for comment before it moves for approval at the Cooperative Executive, please?
Councillor Fox?
Thanks, Lord Mayor. I'll be in discussions with councillor Sam Mohammed, and we will make sure that members are aware of what the process is in delivering this strategy. Thank you to you.
Thank you.
Okay. And on question three about pay harmonisation, why has it taken 12 months to set something up to look at this issue when the people who've transferred from Sheffield Futures have been employed by the council for 12 months? And how long will it be after that before a decision is made? Thank you.
Councillor Fox?
Again, Lord Mayor, I'll be in consultation with councillor Sam Mohammed, our leadership team and adviser, and I'll get back to councillor Leverie in that.
Thank you. Page seven. Any questions on page seven? Page eight. Page nine. Page 10. Page 11. Page 12.
Thank you. A resolution was passed in January to look into the workings of the Repairs and Maintenance Service on council house repairs. This now makes six months for council tenants waiting for scrutiny on this issue. My question will be, when will the issue of council house repairs be looked at by the overview and management committee? Do we have a possible date for that, please?
Councillor Growcock? Councillor Growcock?
Again, councillor Thornton, congratulations on your maiden speech today. I'm currently in consultation with the portfolio leader, and we'll get back to you with the data soon as we know where we're going with that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. 12. Page 13.
Lord Mayor?
Yes, councillor?
There was a slight admin error. It was myself that submitted those questions. I'm just wondering, I understand the reason why there is a small delay with this, but council officers should have this information already. Can a member of the executive give us an indication, please, of when we are likely to get these written responses? Thank you.
Who's going to answer that? We're on page 13.
Sorry, Lord Mayor, I'm struggling with the acoustics in here.
I know, it's not easy.
I'll repeat it, councillor Fox. There were questions to councillor Ichbell, so I understand the reason why this has taken slightly longer than normal. But officers should have the answers to these questions, so I'm just wondering, can, in councillor Ichbell's absence, could a member of the executive give us an indication of when we will have these written answers, please? Thank you.
Thanks, Lord Mayor, thanks, councillor Shifak. I'll take that up, and I'll get back to you after this meeting. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Page 14. Page 15.
Lord Mayor, question two to councillor Douglas Johnson. Councillor Johnson, thank you for your answer. Do you think it was an oversight on your behalf that this wasn't a key part of your coalition agreement with councillor Fox in terms of the demands for forming this new administration? Do you have any regrets that not including this in as a key demand?
Councillor Johnson?
Thanks, I see the point you're making, councillor Mohammed. But I will say that the freebie bus is something that we've expressed a lot of interest in, and it's something that we'll have a look at to see if it's feasible and workable, and it could be a good solution for the city centre. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on page 15? Page 16. Page 17.
Lord Mayor? Question six, I generally wanted an answer from you, councillor Johnson, rather than councillor Paul Wood, because I probably knew what councillor Paul Wood would say, that's why the question to you. So are you able to give me an answer today, or give me an answer in writing, what your view is around a free rent period for council tenants who have been affected by these long delays that clearly have been well-publicised?
Councillor Johnson?
Well, councillor Wood, I think, is the portfolio member for that. I probably can supply a legal answer if you want, because I normally charge about £250 an hour.
Are there any further questions?
Yes, Lord Mayor. Continuing with question seven, similar to the question I posed to councillor Fox, would councillor Johnson also write to councillor, I was going to say councillor, but Dan Jarvis, get the name right, about this concessory fare issue? I mean, clearly I can provide some accounts to both you and councillor Fox after this meeting that clearly shows the consistent underspending of concessionaries at the PTE. So therefore, this excuse that we don't have the money or we have money cut when they're not actually spending their full wike is something I think we should all campaign for. So would you be willing to write to Dan Jarvis, councillor Johnson?
Councillor Johnson? Are you willing to write to Dan Jarvis?
I'm not sure who I'm meant to be writing to now, or who it's from. But, yeah, yes, I mean, I think along with councillor Fox, it's an interesting issue to look at. And the question is, if there is an underspend in the concessory fare budget, there is a question about how much it is and what can be done with it. Because, as I've often said, concessory fares can be a really valuable tool for dealing with isolation, getting people out, and contributing to the economy. Thanks.
Lord Mayor, still continuing?
Yes, continue, councillor.
Question eight is around the Clean Air Zone. Thank you for your answer, which basically said no date fixed, but obviously, in answer to the next question on page 10, it talks about 500 people dying every year because of bad air quality in the city. So clearly, this is an emergency issue, and clearly just saying we're waiting for government probably is not good enough. So could I press you, councillor Johnson, given it's now your portfolio, what action, in particular around the city centre, is this new administration planning to take to address poor air quality? And I'll obviously declare an interest, the part of the city I live and actually represent both also have air quality issues, so this is not a rich or poorish community issue, it affects everyone across the city.
Councillor Johnson?
Yes, thank you, and of course, I represent the city ward, so it's very much in my ward too. And I would just say that it's obviously a really important issue. It's also an issue that's been kicked down the road for a long time at all levels of government, and we're now in this position where we're having to, you know, yet again review more data. And I think it's just, you'll know that it's one of my priorities, because it's not exactly a secret that the Green Party's campaigned on clean air for a long while. And so, yeah, it's in our interest to get things moving as quickly as possible. But there are some quite tricky discussions to be had with central government as to what their aims are, which are not necessarily the same as our aims. And what we want is something that is actually helpful for the people of Sheffield. So there's a few tricky conversations there. I'm sorry, I don't have a time scale, but it's something that I'm actively talking about with officers last week, this week, next week. Thanks.
Thank you. Page 18. Councillor Woolhouse? councillor Woolhouse.
Yes, I'd like to ask a supplementary question regarding the reply that I got. It doesn't really cover much of what was said before the local elections regarding the parking round Rotherham Valley and in particular the car park. The car park actually in the centre has been, the prices were reduced back in April, so Rotherham have already done their part on that side of it. And it doesn't address the question of the parking area at the side of Medugate Avenue. And it is Medugate Avenue that really bears the brunt of all the parking problems round there. And I would like to know what they're going to do about the Sheffield car park, not just disregard it. Thank you.
councillor Johnson.
Thank you, it's a very interesting point there. And as I said, I don't know the answer off the top of my head, so I'm going to have to go away and ask officers about that. So I'll have to try and come back to you on that one. But there is a really interesting point about whether the reduction in car parking prices there on the Rotherham side of the boundary has actually contributed towards encouraging more cars into the area, which might be the issue that you're talking about there. So I think, yeah, we probably do need to have a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Page 19. Are there any questions for page 19? Page 20. Are you page 19? Yeah, stroke 20, yeah.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. Residents' only parking schemes. We've got problems not only in the city and its immediate surrounds, but way beyond it as well. And the answer about reviewing the policy on it is that the policy is only for parking zones in the city and the immediate surrounds. So does the council not have a policy for approving residents' applications for parking zones outside this area where they have specific problems that are causing major issues for the residents? Thank you.
councillor Johnson.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I think the issue is that there isn't a scheme, residents don't apply for permit zones. I mean, it's a council function to identify where parking zones are going to be, you know, maybe on requests from members of the public. But it's not like there's an application. You only have the applications once you already have a zone and there is something to apply for. So if I've got that wrong, which you suggest I have, I'll have to come back to you on that one. But I think that's right. It's the zones themselves aren't things where you just fill in the application form and you get a zone there. So maybe we did look at that in case we're talking at cross purposes. I'll talk to you later.
Thank you. Page 21.
I've got a question that goes over to page 2021 for councillor Johnson. Would you agree with me on the supply of electric buses? Would you agree with me this problem may be a lack of focus by the city region mayor, Dan Jarvis, on the fact that our bus fleet in Sheffield is outdated and not fit for purpose?
councillor Johnson.
Yes, it may be. I mean, there may be other reasons too, but it may be. And actually the issue about clean buses, I mean, I've been raising the question with members at the regional level about why other towns in the country have got much cleaner buses than we have right across South Yorkshire.
councillor Maru, have you got a question on page 21?
Yeah, page 21. Thank you, Lord Mayor. And first of all, congratulations to Sophie Thornton for an excellent speech. Quite impressive, good. Question on to councillor Douglas around school streets. I'm pleased that you've answered them in the way you have, but the issue I raised with officers a few weeks back, they were not aware of school streets, has been something that was being promoted at all. Number one question from me is how do you actually get yourselves on the priority list for having a school street? Because I'm being asked these questions regularly. Question two is how many do you envisage to be made permanent? Because there are sites within the city which clearly have got high pollution levels. And in particular, what I'm talking about here is Lowfields, Hunter's Bar, just to mention a few which are on island sites and highly polluted areas, and also, dare I say it, in my own ward, Westways and Lidget. So could you please answer those questions for me and how quickly this will be rolled out in the city? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
councillor Johnson.
Yep, thanks. Not surprisingly, I don't have those answers here. You can probably tell this is information that the officers have supplied. So we'll have to ask the officers so we can do that. But I would say that the problem with making promises about making things permanent is that the point about doing trials and pilots is to see how well they work and see what the issues are there. But I mean, I'd like to see these rolled out, you know, to really all schools, because for years we have had a problem with people wanting to drive cars, you know, right up to schools permanently. And it's been, you know, an ongoing campaign by, you know, the most vicious lobby to have that right. And that is a fundamental and major shift that we as society need to undo.
Thank you. I bring back councillor Tim Huggan. Sorry, I jumped forward too quickly for you.
That's okay. It's about the bollards in Glossop Road. Do you know that quite often traders or local people or persons unknown are now removing those bollards? And given that a piece of tarmac has been put out into the road adjoining the bus stop in Glossop Road, do you think that this is something that needs to be looked at urgently? Because that's an accident waiting to happen there if the bollards get removed and somebody drives straight into that tarmac that's jutting out into the road.
councillor Johnson.
I must be, I haven't seen that bit myself. I was looking at the other end of Glossop Road, so wondering where are these plastic bollards that councillor Huggan's talking about? So sorry about not looking at that. It sounds like it's one that wants reporting to streets ahead as an emergency thing if it is dangerous like that. So I don't know when the plan is to have them moved or changed. Couldn't come back to you, I suppose. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions on page 22? Page 23.
Yes, Lord Mayor.
Yes, councillor Arias.
Yep. Can I also congratulate councillor Sophie Thornton on her excellent maiden speech? And thank you councillor George Lindis Hammond for the detailed reply to my questions. I'm looking at question two and I don't think I've really got the answer to the question I asked, in that how exactly we were intending to rebalance the demand that was, you know, that the Kingsbury Hill Fox analysis showed that was excessively high in the south west of the city. I appreciate that we, there's a lot we can do regarding oversupply because we don't control the market. But what are we doing to address the high demand in the south west of the city?
Thank you. I think that's a valid point. There's obviously numerous reasons why care homes and other facilities are geographically based in different parts of the city. And that can be anything from land prices to employment supply. However, what I would probably suggest we do is kind of insert that question you asked into the next stage of our strategic review to see if there are mechanisms and things that could be a number of things, including looking at fees, working with partners or internal provision, about how we could try and address that. Because I completely understand that that disparity is going to cause families concern. So if there are, you know, mechanisms we can use as part of the strategic review to try and address that, I suggest that I would put that kind of question into review for you. If that's all right.
Any further questions? Are there any further questions on page 23? Page 24? No. Page 25? Page 26? Page 27? Page 28. councillor Maru.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This is a question for councillor McDonald. I understand the way this question has been answered, which is shrouded in legal confidentiality, and I expected that to be the answer. But does councillor McDonald agree with me that spending £1.22 million has been, is used to reward people for lack of performance, misconduct and a breakdown of employee, employer relationships? Does she agree with, does she agree with me that this is not a good use of council taxpayers' money that could have been used elsewhere? And I think this has been highlighted in the national press as well, that sometimes this money is used as hush money, basically to say, look, you don't tell on me and I won't tell on you. And I don't think that is a really good use of money, especially as we're using council taxpayers' money here. And I think a little bit more transparency in that is called for. And I think councillor Shaffack has touched upon it before as well. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
councillor McDonald.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you for the supplementary question councillor Maru. As far as I'm concerned, each of these agreements has taken place after a full assessment by council officers. So there's no way I'm going to make just a general judgment about whether or not they're good value for money or not. Because I think, you know, that you're pulling together a whole range of different things. And if you have fully read the answer to question one, you'll see that in fact a non-disclosure agreement may be part of a wider agreement when somebody leaves the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Page 29. No. Page, sorry, page 31. Page 32. Page 33. Page 35. councillor Leverie.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you councillor Turpin for a comprehensive response to the questions that I put down. The Sheffield Covid Business Recovery Plan was a business-led initiative to put forward ideas to help recover the district centres and local centres across the city. Now, in the applications that have been received, less than 30% of them are from businesses or business groups. And a large number of district and local centres were not aware of the consultation despite the adverts that went out. Can we look at revisiting some of our key centres that haven't known about this or were told too late to give them the opportunity once again to put in an application, please?
councillor Turpin.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. Thanks councillor Leverie. But there is always the problem, isn't there, of comms. I mean, we try, I guess, to get the word out, you know, we're all in the business of political campaigning and trying to reach the people, but there is always going to be a shortfall. I think that the grants have been oversubscribed quite significantly, and not everybody who has applied will be fortunate enough to receive some money. Can I suggest that you take up my offer to come and join councillor Grokot and myself on the panel where you can input your thoughts and ideas into how the recovery plan is delivered and to make sure that Sheffield's small local businesses get the best out of us? Thanks.
Are there any further questions on page 35? Page 36? Page 37? Page 38? That's an answer. Page 41? Page 42? councillor Thornton? 43? Page 43 councillor Thornton, have you got a supplementary question? Good.
Thank you. Yeah, question seven, please. In April, when I delivered a petition as a member of the public on council house repairs, I was told that there'd be 20 long-term apprentices that would be becoming live by the end of the month. The answer highlights that there are four plasterers and two bricklayers that have become fully deployed, which is excellent, and 12 apprenticeships that have been extended. So by my maths, that makes 18. So I'm just wondering what's happened to the other two? Have they gone missing in action?
I think we need to get back to you in writing with that supplementary question, councillor Thornton, as councillor Woods is not well enough to answer today. Have you got a further question?
So further question on question number nine. As it's taken three months to recruit six gas engineers, I was just wondering how many vacancies are left outstanding to be filled? I'm assuming that will be also a response in writing.
Yeah, yes, that's right. Page 44?
Yep. Page 44, question 12. Given the broadness of the statement that emergency and urgent repairs respond within 24 hours on the side of the repairs and maintenance vans, and by your own statistics, in your answer that nearly 20% of people do not receive this service, I was just wondering why has it been put on the side of a van?
Once again councillor Thornton, you'll get your answer in writing.
And for question 13, I was just wondering if this £1,250 cost of the stickers on the side of remaires and maintenance vans also includes the cost of design and putting them up? But I'm assuming that will again be an answer in writing. And finally, question 14, just wondering if councillor Paul Wood or Terry Fox perhaps on his behalf would wonder, would answer this. Do they think that this is actually a good use of rent payers' money and trade operatives' time?
Once again, you have to wait for your question to be answered in writing. Page 45. councillor Davis, Davison.
Okay. First of all, thank you councillor Wood for your answer. And I hope you, I wish you well. And I hope that you will be able to answer my question in writing, as you're not feeling too good today. It really, it's the answer, on the second paragraph where we're talking about recycling, and I'm glad to hear that it wasn't going to Turkey, that, you know, that it was quite a disturbing report on the BBC Panorama programme about that. But what, I like it really developing this particular answer, because the site that you use in Derbyshire's not currently made any exports to Turkey, which is what it says here, but it's, and it's committed to not doing any going forward, you say, well, in the future. They're now looking to ensure that all materials they process remain in Britain or UK. First of all, I would like to know what are those materials? And how are they being processed? And where they're going? I'd be happy for anybody to answer that if you need to pass it on to somebody else. So the other thing was question two, if I may ask that one as well, recycling categories. Thank you for your answer on that one as well. I'm not aware of this Environment Nut Bill. Is that a printing error? Or is that the name of it? Put your thumb up if it's the name of it, councillor Wood. Is that the name of the bill?
Can anybody answer that question?
Anyway, the question, the question I'm asking on this is to do with things like batteries, which we know of different potencies, bigger batteries than the domestic ones that we might use. Or we may be using some of the big ones, for example, for emburder alarms.
councillor Davison, I don't really want to interrupt, but we've got literally a couple of seconds left. Can you keep your questions shorter, please? Can you keep your questions shorter, please?
Yeah. I would like to see a development on those lines, the collecting of heavy-duty batteries. And if you could give me an answer on that, I'd be very pleased. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions on page 46? Page 47? Page 48? Page 49? Okay, I'm going to propose that we take a break now for everyone. Is that okay? 10 minutes, so we'll be back for five past four. This item has a maximum time limit of 25 minutes. May I call upon councillor Shafak Mohammed to move the motion? You can speak for up to three minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think I'll stay seated because the microphone works better. And as the title of the motion is, this is about rebuilding trust and transparency into the workings of the council, and what we need is the truth. So that's why I'm proposing this motion. We all know what the issue is, the issue that made the news for all the wrong reasons, not just in our city but across the world, the issue around the street trees, but more importantly, how this council operated, how decisions were made, often behind closed doors, and who said what to whom. And to be honest with you, as a city, we need to go forward, and the only way forward is if we genuinely want to learn from the past. And we see in the public gallery, one of the key tree campaigners, Mr Calvin Payne, who, let's be honest, with a sharp end of some of the actions of this council. And I think what we need, not just for the likes of Calvin Payne, but across the board for Sheffield's residents, is to hold this council to account fully in public. And it has to be led by someone of a very senior status, such as a retired judge, and who actually has detailed understanding of public procurement. And they should have access to all council papers if requested, and to be able to quiz council officials if they feel appropriate. And clearly, this is not just about council officials, it's also about city councillors, past and present. And I commit now to being a city councillor that was involved in the Streets Ahead project to be held to account for any decisions that were made under my watch. I have spoken to my colleagues, and they are also willing and happy to be held to account. Councillor Auckland and others are nodding, and I think this is the only way forward. Anything less than this, and I've heard mentioned the word 'local inquiry' will not be good enough. You only have to look at the words of Calvin Payne himself, when he tweeted, and I quote, "At this week's council meeting, a new administration spells out its parities. At the bottom, there is a pledge to hold a local inquiry into tree-felling saga. I don't know what a local inquiry is. I fully support the opposition's motion calling for a public inquiry." If that's what the likes of Calvin Payne want, then that is what we as a city council should deliver, nothing short. And I want to take this issue to task over this kind of thing of, well, let's just do the local inquiry first, and if it finds anything out, we might then proceed to another big inquiry. Sorry, no, we need to rebuild public confidence right now. That's why I urge all councillors from all sides of this chamber, if I can call it the chamber, to please support my notice of motion, and let's hold that very honest debate, and actually be honest with the people of Sheffield about the mistakes that were made, and anyone, doesn't matter who they are, no fear or favour, should be held to account, council officers and councillors, past and present. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Shafak Mohammed. May I call upon councillor Barbara Masters, please, to second the motion?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We acknowledge the administration has apologised for the way it conducted itself during the Street Trees debacle. However, there is not yet the evidence it has learned lessons that will ensure it will reform its practices. We need to be sure the processes and attitudes that led to this will not be repeated if we are to properly regain the trust of people. The whole sorry tale festers, and the council can only rehabilitate itself by entering into a process which is transparent and wide-ranging, as described in our motion. Instead, the current administration has commissioned two separate inquiries. One will consider whether emails circulating within the council at that time were rightly suppressed under a Freedom of Information request. The other is the appointment of the independent person to run the inquiry into the Street Trees saga. The first will not automatically inform the second, which may decide the terms of a reference for a possible third inquiry. Not only does this prolong the whole sorry tale with no end in sight, but it risks vital evidence being lost and access to current and former councillors and council officers who have intimate knowledge of the events. It smacks of greenwashing. There are questions over the sincerity of the administration to the referendum call for councillors to move to a more collaborative way of working. Our calls for discussions on policies, including a judge-led independent inquiry, were ignored throughout the discussion period following the local elections. Instead, we learnt of watered-down versions of what are four key priority policies for Sheffield moving forward through press releases, and no chance of scrutiny until today, through bringing this motion. Hardly an open and transparent way of working, or one that instills trust, which is why this motion matters. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Masters. There are two proposed amendments, and these are numbers three and four on the list of amendments circulated at this meeting. I call upon councillor Julie Growcott to move the amendment number three. You may speak for two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In proposing the amendment to this motion, I would like to start by thanking councillor Mohammed for bringing the motion today. He's clearly led the cooperation agreement between Labour and the Greens dated the 19th of May, where we have agreed to appoint an independent person to conduct the local non-statutory inquiry into the management of the tree dispute. The agreement also states that both groups are committed to working in an open, inclusive and democratic way. Our amendment also deals with past issues by acknowledging that the council has made an unreserved apology for the failings relating to the implementation of the project of managing the street trees. It provides a true perspective of the changed approach to the highway trees over the past three years, which is now widely supported. The tree strategy has been co-produced, working with people who were previously at the centre of the dispute, and I would like to take this opportunity to thank them for making this happen and taking such a positive approach to joint working. This amendment also clearly sets out that the independent chair will have autonomy to run the inquiry and to ensure that the process is fair, transparent, and does not have local councillors of whatever political persuasion trying to influence how it operates. Lord Mayor, I move this amendment.
Thank you, councillor Growcott. A call upon councillor McDonald to second that amendment, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, council, I am seconding the Labour amendment, but first I'd like to congratulate councillor Thornton on her maiden speech. The difference between our amendment and the original motion can be summed up in three words. Our amendment is about putting Sheffield first. We openly acknowledge failings in the streets ahead and the management of the streets' trees element of this, and we have made an unreserved apology. We also accept that it is important to learn lessons. That is why this administration has already committed to holding an independently-led inquiry, and this is enshrined in the Cooperative Executive Agreement. So my challenge to the opposition today is to join us in putting Sheffield first, acknowledge that great progress has been made. We are now working towards a co-produced Street Trees strategy, and we have introduced a significantly different approach to the service. So cooperate with this inquiry instead of whinging on the sidelines, and focus on the needs of the people of Sheffield, rather than trying to score political points. Please support this amendment.
May I call upon councillor Alison Teale to move amendment four. You may speak for up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I agree entirely with Shafak and Julie and Kate that we do need to learn from the past, and I think that this Cooperative Executive is brilliant evidence that that's already happening. I do have the same reservations that any other tree campaigner would have, and that's because of the difficulties we've had with FOIs. The Freedom of Information requests have been very, very slow to come through. Oftentimes, we're still waiting considerable periods of time later. So we are going to have to see a change in that, because if we have an independent inquiry, a person in charge of that process, I hope that they don't have to go through the same thing that a lot of campaigners are having to go through to get to the truth. That's really, really important. We must see a change in that. I agree also with Shafak, we need to be able to question staff and councillors, past and present, but of course, we can't compel them. And even a public inquiry, which by the way has to be sanctioned by central government and have ministerial approval, isn't always given that freedom to compel witnesses. And so, you know, what some campaigners are asking for is probably rather extreme. But we have the insurances that it's going to be independent, have a suitably qualified person, that all major stakeholders are in agreement with, and can all get behind. And I think it's really important that we support this inquiry as it is, and allow it to run its course before we start to attack and criticise it, because that's just really bad faith, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. May I call upon councillor Turpin to second this amendment, please?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I was also part of the campaign to save Sheffield's street trees, and lost many nights' sleep over it, stewing, worrying, being angry. And it was in no small part of why I was elected. I was at arguably the most violent of the protests in Mearsbrook, on Mearsbrook Park Road. It was really horrible and really disturbing. And I think something that we really have to consider is that it was really important to us to have this as part of our Cooperative Executive, and I want to say kudos to councillor Fox and Growcott for going ahead, knowing full well that an inquiry could and probably will be quite uncomfortable for some of the current councillors and members of staff. And I think that it really indicates a movement towards a more cooperative way of working in the council. I think we all dislike the aggression and the adversarialism that's preceded this time. And finally, I would just like to say that I hope the inquiry will be open and honest and transparent, and we'll get to the answers that we really want to hear. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Second this motion.
We now move to the debate on this matter. Councillor Marouf.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. My colleagues, councillor Shafak, Mohammed and Masters, have demonstrated beyond doubt why an independent public inquiry should be held on the trees fiasco, and by independent I mean totally independent, not a local inquiry. Lord Mayor, it grieves me and many other Sheffielders that in this beautiful city of ours with patriotic Sheffielders, that the very people who should be serving them, Sheffield City Council, were responsible for unleashing, and I used a very heavy word, but I've just deleted that, terror on our trees and people. Lord Mayor, thousands of people's lives were affected by this action, the good citizens of this city, Western Road, Ruslings Road, Abidale, Nether Edge, this is just to mention a few, people whose lives were turned upside down. Lord Mayor, I cannot imagine how many people who were awoken at 4am in the morning, cars towed away, people arrested, felt during this sorry saga, which continues to haunt them to this day. Lord Mayor, the trees fiasco was and is one of the darkest periods in the history of this city, one which not only got national recognition but international recognition. The world recognises this city not for the great landscapes and the great people, but the city that destroyed its trees and arrested people for daring to challenge them. Lord Mayor, we must have an independent inquiry led by a person of standing, and whether that needs ministerial consent, we should gain that. Not a local inquiry, officers past, present, and members past and present should be answerable to this inquiry. If found to have acted ultra vires, then appropriate legal action should be taken, including imprisonment, because tree protestors were threatened with imprisonment. Lord Mayor, I ask all members in this chamber to drop party lines and do the right thing and be on the right side of history, because, believe me, there will be an inquiry into this one day. This inquiry that is being proposed is not extreme, it's what is actually needed in this city for this city to move forward, because there is no truth and transparency until this has been settled. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Jones? No, sorry. Mark Jones, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. I welcome the announcements today that we are going to have a further inquiry and exploration of everything that went on with the street trees. We have worked hard for a long, long time, I'm bound to have said that, because it was partly my work for the last year and a half. However, I am a bit dismayed at some of the comments coming from our Lib Dem opposition, in so much that the positions they're taking is prejudicial, they're pre-assuming the outcome of what the exploration will look like, they're pre-assuming that it will be anything but transparent. What this strikes me as is just yet more partisan stance positions from the Lib Dems, and it is really unfortunate. At least councillor Masters had the grace to acknowledge that it had been movement, councillor Mohammed did not. We must move forward from this, and we will not serve this city well whilst we in here bicker and try to score points. One thing that I can agree with councillor Mohammed on is the requirement to learn and the need to move forward and understand what's going on. For me, the establishment of the repository of all the emails that have been moved through on the street tree elements that will be published sooner rather than later is something we should reflect on and learn more about what we're going to do with our council emails and FOIs going forward. As councillor Teal rightly said, we have not always been the best at dealing with FOIs. But maybe as other councils have done, we should, through this process and learning capability, look to expand that approach and make a full repository for all the information that we have, so that when FOIs come in, they go into an open and transparent way forward. That progressive approach is one we should all be embracing, not just bickering, as councillor Mohammed said there in his last speech. Let's move beyond party politics, please, and let's actually address this in a meaningful, grown-up manner. Thank you.
Councillor Martin Smith?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This isn't bickering, it's about doing the right thing and putting this to bed once and for all. I just want to pick up on a couple of things that councillors Growcott and Teal said. Councillor Growcott was very explicit and said this will be a non-statutory inquiry. What a non-statutory inquiry means is that it can be held in private. Witnesses can choose not to take part, there is no compulsion. Statutory inquiries, however, as we're proposing, the presumption is it is always held in public. Evidence has to be presented, if requested. And I'm staggered by what councillor Teal said, on the one hand complaining that information wasn't forthcoming, and then saying she wanted to use a process through which, if somebody chooses not to give that information, they don't have to, and there is no comeback on them. So I'm staggered by the amount of backtracking on that. Lord Mayor, a statutory public inquiry is the only way this issue is going to get put to bed once and for all. The reputational damage to our city has been immense, we all know that. Let's just fix it. Thank you.
Councillor Clement Jones?
Thank you, got it right this time, apologies councillor Jones. Yeah, I'd just like to say, I mean, as, as many people have said, actually, you know, one of the reasons I'm sat here today is because I was walking my dog at the end of my road in Mersbrook Park, and suddenly, there's yellow jackets everywhere, it's, it's going off, and it's like, I live 500 yards along from there, what's going on, why, why's this happening, you know, where's the, oh, there are the police, oh crikey, you know, and it, it just, it, it, I couldn't believe what I was seeing, I really couldn't. And, and again, it happened again, I, I think, it must have been a couple of weeks later, when I think that everyone went back, and there was a sea of people in jackets, and I think maybe 10 people protesting, and, I mean, I nearly went over there and, and joined them, but I, you know, I was walking the dogs, I had things to do. And it, it just, it just said to me, this, this is not Sheffield. And, you know, I'd sometimes kind of seen it in, in anything, but it was really, that was one of the things that, that, that drove me to see collection of Sheffield again, to get to the truth of this. And it's not extreme to, to want the truth, it's, we're not presuming anything. I mean, I, I know what I witnessed with my own eyes, and I was disgusted by it, and I want to find out what happened, I want to know what went on and how we stop it happening again. And without an independent inquiry, a truly independent inquiry, that everybody in Sheffield can believe in, then we might as well not bother. We need to, we need to have that truth, we need to have it in public, and I'm, I, I do listen to, to everything that the Greens and Labour have said, and, and I welcome it, but, you know, we are, you know, we are politicians, and, you know, we don't take everything on trust, and so, we'd like to be able to trust you, and I think this is where we start. So, thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Johnson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, I just wanted to add a few words. I, I actually think it's astonishing, really, it's astonishing that after so many years of, of really intense and acrimonious angst going on, and that's, you know, led to so much political debate in this chamber and outside, and right across the city, and in fact, right across the world's media, that we're in this position. It was a request of ours in the cooperation agreement that we have this street tree inquiry, it's something that's been really important for campaigners, and I know that so much has been done to, to work on the ground, to work out, you know, a new approach towards how we as a city deal with our street trees, and that's, that's come out well. You know, we're talking about historical events, but they're things that are deeply ingrained in what people experience, I mean, no one more so than councillor Alison Teal, and it's, it's not funny to think of, you know, people being imprisoned, there were, you know, lengthy court processes there, that there's a lot to go through. And I think, fair, from my point of view, if Alison's happy with this inquiry, then we all should be, and really, everyone ought to be happy when this is happening, because the alternative is to do nothing. And I know that there will be some people who won't do nothing, and to credit to the New Council leadership that's faced up to the fact it's not a single-party council anymore, we have to put this to bed and then move on, only then. I just want to say, on the concept of a full statutory inquiry, someone wants something like the Hillsborough Inquiry to rerun on this issue, you know, we need to identify where are there many, many tens of millions of pounds to fund that, we need to request, you know, Minister of the Crown to set that up. Why would a Minister of Crown do that? It's, it has the effect of kicking it to the long grass, you know. So, if you want an inquiry not to happen at all, you say, let's ask government to set up an inquiry, and we'll be in the same positions that we are with the, the Orgreave Truth and Justice Commission, where, you know, people are still campaigning for inquiry for the events in 1984.
Councillor Johnson.
I will finish, I will just say that we have got what we have got, and we have got progress. Thank you.
Councillor Richard Shaw.
Chainsaw massacre, those, that was the headline on front of a national newspaper with pictures of a street in my ward, chainsaw massacre. Not just national newspapers in this country, but Sheffield's reputation being trashed around the world, from India to Argentina. Now, contrary to what some of the other councillors have said, asking for the truth isn't bickering. Facts don't care about your politics, and if you want the truth, if you actually care about the full story, how can you go against what my colleagues councillor Mohammed and councillor Masters have proposed, in that we have a proper inquiry to get to the bottom of what happened? Councillor McDonald said the three words that, that they were trying to put forth is putting Sheffield first. But the, the three words that, that come to my mind when hearing the contributions is swept under carpet. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Shaw. Councillor Phipps.
Sorry, I'm right in the middle, aren't I? As Alison and Paul and Douglas have raised, our members and councillors were really involved in these protests to protect our neighbourhoods, ecology and climate. And as Douglas says, not least Alison, who was taken to High Court for taking part in the process and threatened with prison. The local inquiry that was agreed as part of the cooperation agreement was done to really look into what happened and to learn lessons from them, and to really actually achieve this and have it happen. As we set forward in the amendment, this will be an inquiry in the, inquiry in the public, and by an independent person, that is agreeable. So, I really think that the best way forward on this, if we really want to get to the bottom of it, is to support this inquiry and not try to undermine it. This is something that a lot of people have been calling for, let's not push it back, let's not overplay it, let's, let's actually have something happen and look into this. Thank you.
I'm sorry for the people who were open to speak, but we've now run out of time. Yes, I was just about to say so, councillor Mohammed. Would you like to do that?
Yes, please. Thank you, colleagues, for your contributions in the debate, but things, facts don't change. My question, particularly to my Green colleagues, old and new, is what, what's changed since the 7th of February 2018, when councillors Rob Murphy and Douglas Johnson proposed an amendment which read, and I quote, "Calls for an independent inquiry into the conduct of members of the administration and council officers that led to this case being brought, the inquiry team being agreed by all groups represented on Sheffield Council and findings made public, and will ensure the inquiry team will have access to all information." So, what has changed from that call in 2018 for independent inquiry? It didn't say a local inquiry, it said an independent inquiry. What has changed? That's the question tree campaigners out there would be saying. And all I'll say is, people trying to get to the bottom, people trying to get to the truth is not a quest that is extreme, let me be clear. I saw the reaction of the public gallery when those words were uttered. If Green colleagues have compromised, if Green colleagues have decided that actually they're going to now forego that independent inquiry that they wanted in 2018 for a more local, watered-down local inquiry, that's fine, but I don't think it's going to wash out there. It's not going to wash with the constituents that myself and councillor Masters represent on Ruslings Road, I was there that day. Unfortunately, some of those people subjected to that police action will not see the end because they've passed away, and Mr Rob Shaw in particular, a close friend of many of us, will not see the end. But we owe it to people like Mr Rob Shaw and the many hundreds of people that were subjected to intimidation and bullying and harassment by this council to get to the bottom. And it might be uncomfortable, but we have to demand better from this council, and that's why I say it has to be this inquiry led by someone of the stature of a, of a judge or a retired judge. Without it, you are not going to rebuild confidence, and let's be honest, we'll be returning back to this point again. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Please vote for our, our motion and vote against the amendments.
Yes.
I am now going to move to the vote on amendment number three, moved by councillor Julie Grocott. Yes? Recorded vote? Thank you. Are colleagues going to be voting on the amendment as a whole? Looking to the whips? Yes? Okay.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The Lord Mayor, councillor Gayle Smith.
Abstain.
Deputy Lord Mayor, councillor Sean Edmire Richards.
Four.
Simon Clement Jones.
Against.
Richard Shaw.
Yes.
Sophie Thornton.
Yes.
Bob McCann.
Yes.
Chris Rosling-Josephs.
All.
Anne Woolhouse. Denise Fox. Brian Lodge. Karen McGowan. Angela Ogensio. Brian Homshaw. Calton Rivers. Talib Hussain. Mark Jones. Sophia Said. Douglas Johnson. Ruth Mesrow. Martin Phipps. Tim Huggan. Mohammed Marouf. Ruth Melsom. Maza Ikbal. Mary Lee. Zahira Nas. Jo Otten. Colin Ross. Martin Smith. Victoria Boden. Moya O'Rourke. Alan Woodcock. Roger Davison. Barbara Masters. Shafak Mohammed. Abdul Kaim. Alan Law. Abtizan Mohammed. Sue Alston. Andrew Sangar. Cliff Woodcraft. Alexi Diamond. Kate McDonald.
Four.
Paul Turpin. Ian Auckland. Sue Auckland. Steve Ares.
Against.
Christine Gilligan. George Linders-Hammond. All. Josie Pazcheck. Terry Fox. All. Anne Murphy. Tony Downing. Kevin Oxley. Peter Garbutt. Marouf Ralph. Alison Teal. Ben Miskell. Jack Scott. Sophie Wilson. David Barker. Mike Drabble. Diane Hurst. Dawn Dale. Peter Price. Gary Weatherall. All. Mike Chaplin. Tony Dams. Jane Dunn.
Four.
Penny Baker. Vicky Priestley. Richard Williams. Lewis Chin Chen. Julie Grocott. Francine Johnson. Ben Curran. Neil Gibson. Bernard Little. Alan Hooper. Mike Leveray. Anne Whitaker. Mick Rooney. Jackie Sutter. And Paul Wood. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
I'm now going to, sorry, I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number four, moved by councillor Alison Teal. Are members going to vote on this amendment in parts? Yes?
If, I think we, we would vote for the Green amendment with the exception of paragraph B.
Thank you. Did, it was B. Was it B? Yeah.
Oh, Lord Mayor, I was mistaken, we voted for the substantive motion.
Just, just for clarity, Lord Mayor, we will be voting for the Green amendment.
Thank you. All those in favour of amendment four, please show and raise your hands. All those against? Any abstentions? That's carried. I'm now going to move to the vote on the substantive motion. Our members, I think this is where, sorry, Tim, yeah?
In voting for the substantive motion, we'll be voting against the, the clauses B to G and whatever the Green renumbering is now. Okay?
Did you get that?
I agree.
Okay. Councillor Dams, have you got? Okay. All those in favour of the substantive motion, please raise your hands.
Lord Mayor.
Yes?
Can I just question something, because if you're voting against the majority of the amendments, that's not a vote against the amendment, against a substantive motion for a motion, as more, as there are more clauses that they are voting against, is that not the answer?
I can't answer that, but I know a lady who can.
Thank you, councillor Lodge. It is, it's usually councillor Rooney who raises this one, and he's not here, so, yeah. We, we do, we do this as a bit of a shorthand, so it, so it doesn't really matter which way it is, as long as the, the person who's recording it is clear which bits of the motion you're voting for and which bits you're, you're voting against. So, it will be recorded paragraph by paragraph in the minutes, so there's clarity when it's recorded as to how the vote went, so it, it's.
If I may, Lord Mayor, to do, for members of the public who are maybe watching online or tactics on the website after, that makes sense if they're in Paris, that the, the little Democrat group are voting against the majority of the motion, if they were putting their hands up to support substantive motion, where there are more clauses that they are voting against than four, so, wouldn't it be better for them to, to be honest about it and say they are voting against it, they're voting for the clauses that they're voting for?
Councillor Lodge, if the members of the public wish to look on the council's website after this meeting, they'll be able to understand. We now move into the vote. All those in favour of the substantive motion, please raise their hands. All those against? Any abstentions? That's carried. That's carried. We're now on notice of motion number eight. The notice of motion regarding action on the nature of the emergen, sorry, I'll start that again, action on the nature emergency. There is a maximum time limit of 25 minutes on this item, and I call on Peter Growcott to move the motion. You may speak for three minutes. Garbutt, I do apologise. Sorry. I don't know my Garbutts, Robbie Garbutts. Anyway. Councillor Garbutt.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The UK is amongst the most nature-depleted countries in the world. According to the World Wildlife Fund, out of more than 200 countries, we rank 12th. That's 12 from the bottom. Over a quarter of our animal species are at risk. It's estimated about 300,000 hedgehogs are killed every year. Experts believe there are only about 35 remaining wild cats. They, along with grey long-haired bats, water voles, and many more, are on the growing red list of animals at risk of extinction in this country. It's not just our mammals, our invertebrates, our fish, our birds are suffering too. Their habitats, rivers and lakes, wetlands, moorlands, meadows, woodland, and urban habitats are all under pressure. So where does pressure come from? Comes from farming practices where intensive use of land degrades the soils and where farmers kill creatures like badgers in a deeply ingrained belief that they harm their livestock. It comes from recreational use such as fox hunting and grouse shooting, where it isn't just the grouse that get killed, but mountain hares, raptors, and anything else that interferes with their sport. From golf courses, impeccably manicured for the sport but very destructive of natural habitats. It comes from our planning system, which pretends, via the biodiversity net gain legislation, to care about our precious and vulnerable species, but which almost invariably ends up, driven by the build, build, build imperative from on high, removing vital habitats. It comes from our obsession with neatness, which brings poisons like glyphosate onto our streets, and noisy mowers cutting our roadside verges to within an inch of death every three or four weeks. By the way, it's only June, and the verges on my street have already been cut three times this year. They also ensure our parks are relatively sterile, expanses of lawn. So from the carelessness of our throwaway society where individuals drop their single-use plastic bottles, wrappings, cigarette butts, vape paraphernalia, and even their dog poo bags on the street or chuck them into the shrubbery, where the commons of land, water, and air are regarded as little more than dumps for the various copious wastes produced by our linear economy. But here we are in Sheffield, the outdoor city. How can we promote our city in this way whilst ignoring the harms our outdoors is suffering? Do we want our fellow Sheffielders to continue choking on poor air quality? Do we want our visitors to be disgusted at the litter and the overzealous annihilation of our outdoor greenery? How much of our outdoors can we eradicate before the name 'The Outdoor City' becomes an out-and-out lie? To stop this happening, to reverse the decline, we must first recognise the problem. This declaration is that first step, and I commend it to you.
Thank you, councillor. May I call on councillor Argenzio? Did I get that right?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you for getting my name right, and congratulations to councillor Thornton for her impressive maiden speech. And I'm going to take you on a little journey first and then come back to Sheffield. Orangutans, all the special place in my family as my son became obsessed with them from about age two. He ended up having three orang teddies, and they went everywhere with him. I was going to bring one in today, but he didn't really feel very comfortable about coming to Fons Forge. My son's love for this species may have started because of their incredible human eyes, but soon changed into a passion for their welfare and worry about the destruction of their habitat. Orangutans are not just cute, they play a vital role in seed dispersal for trees that in turn sustain countless other species as well as sustain the forests that in turn, again, absorb carbon from the atmosphere. Like any other species, orangutans have their place and their role on planet Earth. In my son's lifetime, just under 16 years, it is estimated that the orangutans population in Borneo has declined by 50% from nearly 200,000 to less than 100,000. This is solely due to loss of habitat caused by human activity and greed. So when we take the lead at local level and we make conscious decisions to protect the nature on our doorstep, we actively invest in our beautiful city, and we also ensure the survival of our local species for future generations. We preserve nature for our grandchildren's children. Loss of biodiversity and climate change are intertwined, and we need to act on both together and urgently. Declaring a nature emergency in Sheffield today will mean that we can immediately and urgently start work on a strategy to increase biodiversity as well as stop any practices that endanger, that endanger it in our city. Lord Mayor, for our grandchildren's children, I urge all councillors to support this motion.
Thank you. There are two proposed amendments, and these are number five and six on the list of amendments circulated at this meeting. May I call upon councillor Barbara Masters, please, to move amendment five?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This notice of motion is one we wish to support. We have been pressing the council to declare a biodiversity emergency, along with many other agencies, and pressing for action on climate change. The pandemic has heightened people's awareness of our natural world and exposed our vulnerability to global events over which we have limited control. We must push forward with this, but it is vital the measures we put in place have the support of Sheffielders irrespective of their personal circumstances. Too many won't have the financial resilience to adapt to changes that will come. This must be factored into any plan. It is unclear which audience this motion is aimed at. It contains statements that are too loosely worded and can be interpreted in ways that reflect the views of the reader. It will lead to poor decision-making, with time taken up arguing over definitions instead of discussing actions and their implementation. On the other hand, it's very prescriptive. It demands a top-down approach. Risking any plan that flows from this will be done to instead of done with the people of Sheffield. It will exclude many voices and alienate people. The list of examples suggests a lack of insight into the contributions of individuals and communities often not part of an organisation. We've not deleted clauses, we added amendments which commit us to involving the wider community because we do not all face the same challenges. They give recognition of the work already done by individuals, organisations, and councillors from all parties. We need to build on this going forward. We ask the party opposite, parties opposite, for policies that matter to Sheffield. This motion leads to one we could all have agreed on and fleshed out a month ago if it had been proposed. Therefore, I commend our amendment to the councillors. Thank you.
May I call upon councillor Tim Huggan, please, to second this amendment?
I'll sit down because the microphone doesn't work when you move away from it. Lord Mayor, just firstly, I wanted to say congratulations to councillor Thornton on her maiden speech earlier, fantastic speech. This motion coming so forward so soon after the gutting of a similar nature emergency motion, and I presume the Green amendment is to put in the things they, the Liberal Democrat motion seeks to improve on this motion, I presume the Green amendment is to put in the things they forgot about in the original motion. Fine words will not save our declining and degraded natural habitats here in Sheffield. Only deliberate concerted action will do that. This motion sets our vision rather than policy programme, as all motions do. We must involve everybody in Sheffield in actions that will help save our wildlife and habitats. We must take the people with us, and we must get them to feel that they are involved in solutions that they can play a keen role. If we don't, we risk failure. Look at Switzerland at the weekend, where any poll will say that there they are as environmentally conscious as anywhere, but they rejected key measures to tackle climate change just this weekend. We must act now. We must embed policy into actions and create a framework through the local plan, but where is the draft local plan that needs to be consulted on? I look forward to helping develop policy through the new council structure. As Liberal Democrats, we will be a critical friend in driving the climate and nature emergencies and the response here in Sheffield up the agenda, but we will not be pliant supplicants when we believe the wrong path is being taken on this or that ordinary Sheffielders are not being involved. I commend the Liberal Democrat amendment and hope that it is adopted.
Thank you. Can I now call upon councillor Bernard Little to move amendment number six? You may speak up to two minutes. This is not a maiden speech, it's a returning one. Councillor Bernard Little? I was waiting.
Thank you very much. Yes, 11 years ago, I did say I would be back, and I've been, I'm back now with, there's now 13 of us, not just three. Yes, I speak not only as a newly elected councillor for the Green Party, but also as Chair of the Ponderosa Nature Group. This is a neighbourhood grassroots group in an urban area, an urban setting, a very, very degraded area with a lot of social tension. Silent Spring by Rachel Carson's was published in 1962. It was a stark warning about our impact on nature and launched the modern environment movement. It's a tragedy that despite very small wings, business as usual continues, and the warnings that it talked about have gone unheeded. Sixty years later, our present way of life, the sort of economic system that we are pushing, is plundering the planet, and it's triggered the world's sixth great extinction. At long last, humanity has woken up to the fact that our wellbeing and natural environment are inextricably linked, they cannot be separated. This amendment recognises the fact that urban wildlife habitats have become the last refuge for many species driven from the wider countryside. It says that, given the political will, we must act swiftly to avert disaster by involving our local communities, bottom up. Sheffield is perhaps unique. It has hundreds of green spaces, from the size of a snooker table to a golf course. They consist of large parks, woodland, hedgerows, streams, ponds, and lakes. These spaces have the potential to be full of the comings and goings of birds, water creatures, insects, trees, soil, fungi, and mammals. They anchor us as people in the seasons and remind each of us that the earth functions around us, no matter what is going on in our lives. Green spaces are common land, they are our land where people can gather and meet people who would otherwise be strangers. The action we take in Sheffield in adopting these and other measures-
Nearly time, councillor.
...that serve as an example of the very best urban, social, and environmental practice, bottom up. I recommend you to vote for this amendment. Thank you.
May I call upon councillor Turpin to second the amendment, please?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. The nature emergency is really part of the climate emergency, and as with the climate emergency, we can build a better society by addressing it. We've been told too many times that we must have a plan to tackle it before we can declare an emergency. Well, we will declare it, and we will learn by doing. We have a few ideas in this amendment to be going on with. We also, we've put in the 2030 carbon neutral target, as this was only announced in a speech by Louis Dagnall, and as far as I'm aware, has only ever been voted down each time it was presented in a motion before that time. So I hope you will support our amendment. I second it. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
We now move to the debate. Councillor Mark Jones?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Not Clement Jones, but maybe later. I'm going to come from a strange position here in supporting largely what Masters and Huggan have said, councillors. I do believe that we do need to have the citizens of Sheffield on board on this. And why am I saying that, and why do I say that it needs to come in that approach? Both councillors Garbo and Argenzio, forgive my pronunciation, talk about the human activity and the impact that we have on nature. And if we want to look at that and see what that means for Sheffield in a Sheffield-specific manner, we only need to look to Redmeyers, where earlier last year, we saw lots of people flocking out there in their cars to enjoy the great green space. Problem being, they went with their dogs, and they allowed their dogs to run free around our drinking water site, and as a result, have pushed the vole population at that site, the only viable vole population in South Yorkshire, to the brink of extinction. It is not that long ago that there was said to be no voles in South Yorkshire. That is the breeding population that we need to protect. So though there's not anything really to object in any of this, if we do not bring the people of Sheffield on board, we will fail. And the only way we can do that is by talking openly and honestly with every member of our citizenship, because we need them to change their ways. Dog owners aren't inherently evil. Those dogs weren't going out and being let run free just to have a go at voles, they were just stretching their legs. But people innocently and through no malice allow their dogs to run free and as such damage an endangered species. We need a full conversation, and we need the permission of Sheffielders to do this. So I welcome the motions, and I specifically thank the inputs from the Lib Dem councillors. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Colin Ross?
Actually, there's a great deal, we're all agreeing with you on this, and it's quite heartening, but I've just found something I want to disagree with councillor Garbutt on in what he mentioned, in golf courses. As a golf member myself, I can assure him, there is a lot of wild areas on golf courses that I visit very frequently, and in fact, some of the better manicured places, I wish they were a bit wider, because I seem to be treading on those not very frequently at all. And actually, on the golf course I play at, I see an amazing amount of wildlife, the birds, deer roaming over it, badgesets and so on. And actually, golf courses are a haven, actually, for a lot of wildlife. But can I just say that I think we're all on the same side here? We want to protect things. I actually, councillor Jones's recent remarks about the voles and vole populations, yes, it's unintended consequences as some of our own actions that we need to be aware of. So we are supporting these, the notice of motion and the amendments, but just remember, golf courses are places where wildlife flourishes. Thank you. Thank you.
Councillor Hooper?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations to councillor Sophie Thorne on her maiden speech. I fully support both our notice of amendment and the notice of motion. I think for once we're all singing off the same hymn sheet, I think that's what you said before. The nature emergency in Sheffield needs to be embedded in the climate emergency and climate change, also in the working agenda of our newly formed local area committees, and embedded in the local emerging local plan. Local councillors working with local communities are well placed to deliver this. Real power decentralised so that local people have ownership. Ecclesfield Parish Council currently have a hedgehog project highlighting the massive declining hedgehogs. What we're doing there at the parish council is we're creating hedgehog highways. Modern gardens don't allow hedgehogs to get in, get out and get in between gardens. So we're trying to create hedgehog highways. Hedgehogs are really a decreasing species. The parish council is working with local schools to try and ensure that local children are aware of this and it's working really well. The children are getting engaged and want to be involved. Please support our amendment and the notice of motion. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
There are no more speakers, so councillor Garbutt, would you... Just a minute, Brian Lodge has put his hand up at the very last minute. Councillor Lodge?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you for the indulgence there, getting in late. I didn't know whether I'd get the opportunity to. It was just really to reflect on some of the things that happened in the city over the last year and how with people going out and walking out around the city more and getting out and more walks into parks and areas that they'd not become used to before, people are seeing things differently. I think the time is right that we actually all get together and we look at what this city's got and we work hard to do it. I'll just use an example in Burley Wood. If people don't know it, there's a pond at Freshford, Freshford Pond, and for many years now, we've had swans that have been on the pond and every year, they produce signets and there might be five, six signets and they go around. This time last year, and it's quite ironic because it came up on a memory, on a picture, this time last year, there were people that were walking up Thornbridge Drive because the swans with their signets in tow behind them were walking around because they walked them around the estate to show them, as if to say, "One day, son, all this will be yours", and they walked them through. But there are a number of people that commented, that sort of said, "Wow, we've got swans, we've got signets", that they'd not seen them, but they'd been there for many years. But it just shows that nature is recovering and coming back. Last year, in the lockdown, there were deer that were seen down near towards the station that had come down the valley, that were outside the kitchen, wren kitchens that were seen in the car park there, and so many other things are out there. So we all have our duty and we all have a role to play and I think it's right that we're looking forward now and we're looking at what we can do and saving Sheffield going forward. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Peter Garbutt, would you like to have your right of reply? You have two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you councillor Lodge for doing my back in. Having to stand up and then sit back down again and stand up again. Okay, yes, thank you very much for all the contributions. I think we can get behind those, we can certainly understand why the Lib Dems thought that there was no seeking to engage the people of Sheffield. We do seek to engage the people of Sheffield, of course we do. This is a big policy and we need to make sure that the people of Sheffield understand it and co-produce it, because without that, it won't work. We will have to have policies imposed from above because we can't not have policies. Therefore, if we want it to work, we must engage with the people of Sheffield and with local expertise as well. I've forgotten who it was who was talking about embedding this in the lax and in the local plan. I think it needs to be embedded in all policy areas because everything we do in policy areas has an impact either on climate or on biodiversity and I think we really need to make sure that this is something that everybody understands and can get behind when talking about new policies. So, thank you very much, everybody, and let's see how the vote goes from there. Okay, thank you.
I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number five, moved by councillor Masters. Are members happy to vote on the amendment as a whole or in each separate paragraph? All those in favour of amendment number five, please show hands. I think that's everybody. That's unanimous. And it's carried. I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number six by councillor Little. Are members happy to vote on the amendment as a whole or on separate paragraphs? As a whole? As a whole. All those in favour, please show your hands. That's also unanimous. That's carried. I'm now going to move to the vote on the substantive motion. Are we still going to vote as a whole or are we voting in separate paragraphs? As a whole. All those in favour, please show. I think that's unanimous. Yeah, thank you. Motion is carried. Give yourselves a clap. We're now going back to item six.
Lord Mayor, we would like to withdraw item six and we'll take it next time.
I'm sorry about that, Tony, I was too busy talking to somebody else. Do you want to withdraw item six?
Yes, and we'll take it next time.
Do we need consent of the meeting? All those... Does everyone agree? Have you lost the plot? Do you know what we're talking about? Item number six has been withdrawn so it can be used at a further meeting. Is everyone okay about that? Thank you. We now move to item 10, the making of Broome Hill, Broomefield Encliff, Southfield and Taptown BBEST neighbourhood plan. This item of business is to be approved. The recommendations in the report of the Executive Director place on the result of Broome Hill, Broomefield Encliff, Summerfield and Taptown neighbourhood plan referendum and outlining the steps to be taken in the consequence of its outcome. The report was published with the agenda of this meeting. The motion is to move... Sorry, the motion is to note the outcome of the neighbourhood plan referendum and make the Broome Hill, Broomefield Encliff, Summerfield and Taptown neighbourhood plans such that is adopted as a planned document as part of Sheffield Strategy Development Plan is to be moved by councillor Terry Fox and seconded by councillor Julie Grocott. Councillor Fox?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Grocott?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. All those in favour of the motion, please raise your hand. All those against? Any abstentions? The motion is carried. We're getting there. Item number 11, transition to a committee system of governance. This item of business is to approve the recommendations in the report of the Director of Legal and Governance and Monitoring Officer on the transition to the committee system of governance. The report was circulated to members of the council and published on the council's website towards the end of last week. The motion to approve the three recommendations in the report is to be moved by councillor Terry Fox and seconded by councillor Julie Grocott. Councillor Terry Fox?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just before I do move this, I'd like to congratulate councillor Thornton on her maiden speech and welcome back councillor Little in his speech. I can't open it for his maiden, but welcome back, Bernard. Lord Mayor, briefly, just before I start, I would just like to say a few words about an event we attended this morning on behalf of Pat Misley and her family. Very emotional event and I know that tributes have already been paid to Pat, but it was a very fitting tribute that we've now renamed a street on Park Hill, a project that Pat defended to the hilt and we've now named it Pat Misley Way. And I know some comrades weren't able to get there, but it was a fitting tribute for all. Lord Mayor, just on this report, the reason why we have moved this and took item six off the agenda is because this item cannot go without some words of moving towards this transitional committee. We cannot underestimate the referendum that has been took by the people of Sheffield in moving this forward. I understand that there is an amendment in and, you know, for me, I wish the Lib Dems wouldn't be a party of the past, but actually get on the front foot and come forward with this cooperative executive. This transitional move to transitional committees has been a major plank of that negotiations to go forward and I am really confident of the chairs that we've got in place to take these forward. The purpose of the transitional committees is to help the council begin to work within a system where all parties' views are taken into consideration when making decisions and setting policy. The committees will undertake policy development work and the activities of the cooperative executive and provide cross-party engagement prior to the decision-making so we get a wide range and a broad sense of views. And I know the chairs of those committees will assist in doing that. This will run at the side of public involvement and I think if we are to get the diversity and we're to get the absolute involvement of all our citizens across this city, I think it has to run and we have to get up and running, not only with the transitional committees but with our public engagement. Obviously, the committees will be outward facing, they may implement mechanisms, but more so, it will be how they work within our local area committees. So those area committees will have a voice in not only bottom-up approach but top-down approach. When we was discussing a way forward with this cooperative executive, that was a main stay of that.
Your time's up, councillor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. May I just say that I warmly welcome this report? Thank you.
Councillor Grocott?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In seconding this report, I'd like to thank Julian Dutworth, the head of Legal and Governance and her team, for all the work that they've done so far in getting us to this stage. It's very important as we move to the new way of working that we ensure that the legal obligations that we undertake as a council are properly considered and are part of the framework moving forward. And this is what this report sets out to do today so that we can be clear and we can make sure that how we move forward is lawful. It also gives us the opportunity, before we move to the new way of working, which we must do by May next year, to trial the way of working so that if we see any blips along the way, we have the opportunity to get them righted before May next year so that we're not into a new way of working with the difficulties that may come with that. We don't know what the final plan will look like, but for the next year, we have put in place four transitional committees. They will work very closely with the co-op executive and they will also form a governance team, which, believe you me, will have an awful lot of work to do over the coming 12 months to make sure that we do get the governance structure properly and in place. So I think as councillor Fox says, I think we need to let that committee get on with the work, agree this report and let us move forward and do some really good work with and for the people of Sheffield. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
I did mention at the beginning of the meeting that due to people having to wait to speak because of the microphone being walked about, that we would perhaps extend the meeting for 15 minutes. Is that... Can someone second that?
Seconded.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Lord Mayor. We do have... Where am I? Wait a minute. There is a proposed amendment and this is number nine on your list of amendments. May I call upon councillor Simon Clement Jones to move the amendment and please be mindful of the time.
Thanks very much, Lord Mayor. Obviously, I must congratulate my colleague Sophie Thornton first. Kick ass, well done, thank you very much. I've got to say, councillor Fox seems to think that we're in the past. Now, the past is Labour domination, it's winner takes all and that's what you're proposing here. You're proposing that this committee is dominated by Labour. We can have a proportionate committee, if we add four members, that is not dominated by one party and surely that is what the people of Sheffield voted for. They voted for us to cooperate, not to have one party dominate the other in the way that has in the past, councillor Fox. The future is truly cross-party and that is all we are proposing here, that adding a few members actually makes it so that each party has the power, combining with another one, to move forward. Whereas you're saying that Labour must be able to dominate this and all it takes is a little bit more involvement. And the second part of our amendment is that we should co-opt other members, non-voting members, who aren't politicians, who do have that view. There's people in this city who've been involved in this campaign, in the successful campaign, who will have views, who would want to put into that and some may want to put the time in necessary to join this board. And all we're asking for is for fairness, for a non-Labour-dominated board and a truly cross-party way to start this process that the people of Sheffield can believe in. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Steve Ares?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and can I congratulate Bernard Little on his return to the council? In May, Lord Mayor, in May, not only did the people of Sheffield vote by a resounding 64% in a referendum for a change in the way the council is run, but they also put the political balance of Sheffield City Council into one with no single party in overall control. Members of the Overview and Scrutiny and Management Committee at the time will recall the additional hours we put in over the winter month of 2019 when we took evidence from a wide range of local government bodies and local interest groups and the Monitoring Officer advisers on scrutiny's legal and democratic legitimacy and cross-party political proportionality. Unfortunately, we're stuck with first past the post and we have to recognise the result that that system has produced in this chamber. And it's disappointing, I have to say, for this side of the chamber not to have been offered suggestions on common key policy priorities to move our city forward that we could negotiate on in the period that followed the local elections. But what is now being- But what is now being proposed is for the very body being set up to oversee the transition to a committee system way of working, not to truly reflect the outcome of the elections, but that effectively gives the power of veto to one political group. What the report is proposing at paragraph 2.2 is a governance committee that is made up of six Labour members, one Lib member, one Lib Dem member and none from the other parties. How we move forward into a committee system should be on the basis of agreement between parties, not one group acting as still having majority control. It also makes sense, we feel, that council recognises it's our city who not only contributed so much to the evidence gathering...
I just ask you, councillor Ayres, I want to stop you there and I want to clarify what you've just said from the Monitoring Officer.
Really sorry to interrupt you, councillor Ayres, but that's not true about the make-up of the committee. It's not six Labour members...
I'll have to... I'll look away from you while I'm speaking. It's not true that there's six Labour members and one other member on the committee. It's made up of the chairs of the four transitional committees, so that's two Labour, one Lib Dem and one Green. It's councillor Julie Growcott, who's Labour, as chair, and councillor Penny Baker, who's Lib Dem, as vice-chair, and then councillor Mary Lee, who has an overarching responsibility for the LAC chair, sorry, local area committee chairs, who is Labour as well. So on my calculation, it's four Labour, two Lib Dem and one Green.
Okay, councillor Ayres, carry on.
Yeah, notwithstanding, I mean, it is... Notwithstanding, Lord Mayor...
Quiet, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Notwithstanding, the government's committee is not strictly proportional to the outcome of the, you know, what the local elections has produced. And I thank you for the intervention of the Monitoring Officer, but if I may continue, Lord Mayor, it also makes sense that we feel that the council recognises it's our city who not only contributed so much to the evidence gathering sessions but also played such a remarkable role in achieving the referendum result and in bringing this change about by offering them a non-voting place on the government's committee and their role can ensure the process is honest and fair. What our amendment is...
Your time is up, councillor. I'm now going to open this up. Councillor Shafak Mohammed?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This committee is going to be very important as part of rebuilding trust, particularly in terms of being able to demonstrate how this council wants to change. And at the moment, the make-up of that is not proportionate and actually it gives the Labour a majority. So our amendment, which is asking for 11 members of that committee, would give Labour five, Liberal Democrat four, Green two. So no group can do anything without the support of another group. And that way, I think, will lead to people having to work with each other. And I don't see a problem with the very organisation and groups of individuals and volunteers that spent hours and hours pounding the streets, the parks, the shopping centres of Sheffield. It's our city being invited to come and sit amongst us as a non-voting member. What is the problem? We've got to have that campaign group working alongside us to help us design the system that they've wanted. It's no point keeping it's our city outside and us designing it ourselves, particularly if it's a Labour majority, because then they will be disquiet out there. And that's why I'm urging colleagues to think long and hard on what we're suggesting. This is a more proportionate system. If councillor Otten was here, he would argue with all the minutia of which percentage point and what from his master's degree, but he's not able to come because of having to isolate. But I'm telling you, this system is more proportionate, so therefore, please vote for our amendment to not have seven members but have 11. And more importantly, let's have it's our city as a non-voting member on this so they help us shape the future direction of this council. What is wrong with that?
Thank you. Deputy Lord Mayor?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And congratulations to Sophie from me for your fabulous speech. It's good to know there are younger feminists on the way up. Something that you did say was about intersectionalism and that was also then something that Calhoun raised. And one of my concerns about saying that we would want to have a person from it's our city on the committee is that they reflect one strand of the vibrant voluntary sector, if you like, of our great city of Sheffield. So by inviting one person, we are excluding all the other groups, particularly our Black and minority ethnic groups. And, you know, I would say we probably have enough nice, middle-class white women on the council and if we're going to involve other people, the people we want to invite are the people who we think really want and need to be involved in how our city changes. So when Steve said we did have a lot of range of views at the scrutiny committee, we did, and that's what I want to see us doing again, having a range of views, not co-opting one person, but inviting in to meetings, to different meetings, lots of different views, different people, so that this is a transition committee, if you like, that is informed by all the views of Sheffield and not just one person. And that's why I would move against that part of the amendment. On the numbers, if you want to raise them, that's fine, but let's make sure that this committee takes far more views in than one group in our city. Thank you.
Councillor Johnson?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's getting late, so we ought to keep this short. But of course, first of all, councillor Thornton, nice one, nice maiden speech, first speech, whatever, thank you. And Bernard Little, I've not heard a maiden speech from you for the last 11 years, so that's great. On this one here, like the Street Tree Inquiry, the issue was there was, you know, we want to get on with it. There's been years of delay, we want to get on with it and we all want to push that now. Similarly with this one. We could have sat on this and discussed and fuddled around for the whole of this year. That doesn't help anyone. It is a credit to the negotiations of all the parties in building up the cooperative executive that we said it's a priority to try and get this new governance arrangement into place, because there aren't going to be a lot of teething problems. It's about time someone cracked on with it. So that's what this proposal is here. And I know that there's been some commentary from it's our city about saying we should delay this, but we do need to start because if we don't start now, we'll just delay and then start later and then nothing will ever happen. In terms of the proportionality, I mean, I think if George Orwell was working in Democratic Services, which... No, you know, he doesn't, I'm just checking. Then I think he would have said that all committees are politically proportionate, but some politically proportionate committees are more politically proportionate than others. So I'm sure we'd all support moving to the 11-member committee because that actually does mean we've got a balance there. The seven-member committee is a bit problematic, so that's fine, that's quite a helpful intervention from the Lib Dem amendment here. The bit about bringing in one particular group or maybe it's one particular person for one particular group, giving them a sort of prioritised place over other campaign groups in the city is problematic in it, as I said. It's difficult for us because, of course, we are the 84 people who've been elected after having campaigned on a particular issue and... Right, I will finish there. You get the point. We think that's problematic and would prefer not to support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Now going to allow councillor Terry Fox to speak to end this debate.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thanks for all, everybody contributing to this because it is, as councillor Johnson says, we've got to get moving on this. And I couldn't have put it any eloquently or any better than my comrade, the deputy Lord Mayor, in where she says about the inclusivity of this city. But we've heard the language again from the party of the past, domination, dominating. This is now where we are in a politically proportionate way of working and you've got to wake up. You've had the opportunity, the opportunity is still there to come and join this executive. You can come and work with us going forward to put Sheffield first. But if you continually, continually keep in the past, I'm afraid we're going, people are just not going to take you serious. We are now looking forward, we are now looking to be adventurous. We've said that we're going to work alongside these transitional committees with the public, with all public and anybody else who wants to come outside with the LGA, the Centre for Scrutiny and Governance. We are going to work with all organisations because we need to get this right. May 2022 is now closing up upon us. Sorry, Lord Mayor, but I just feel passionate that this is a first step in a new way of working and what we can't be done is old-bite by the party of the past. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
I am now going to move to the vote on amendment nine, moved by councillor Clement Jones. All those... Sorry, sorry. Can I have a show of hands? Yeah, I'm going to do that now. Yeah, give me a chance. Are all parties going to vote as a whole or in parts? You certainly can.
Lord Mayor, can I say that when we vote for, we're voting for A but not B? Sorry. When we vote for this, we're voting for A but not B.
Goodness me, such cooperation has never existed before.
Councillor Phipps, we're all on the same side at last.
Ah, yeah, let's hope so. Okay, so we're having a recorded vote? Yes? Yes, we do, it's been called for and so we'll... Yeah. We know what you want, we'll record it. Okay. Councillor Mohammed? Monitor Officer, please, can you do a recorded vote?
Yes, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, councillor Gail Smith?
Abstain.
Deputy Lord Mayor, councillor Sean Edmire Richards?
For Part A and against Part B.
Simon Clement Jones? Richard Shaw? Sophie Thornton? Bob McCam? Chris Rosling-Josephs? Anne Woolhouse? Denise Fox? Brian Lodge? Karen McGowan? Angela Argenzio? Brian Homshaw? Calhoun Rivers? Tali Pissain? Mark Jones? Safie Said? Douglas Johnson? Ruth Mercer? Martin Phipps? Tim Huggan? Mohammed Marouf? Ruth Milsom? Mary Lee? Zahira Nas? Colin Ross? Martin Smith? Victoria Bowden? Alan Woodcock? Roger Davison? Barbara Masters? Shafak Mohammed? Abdul Khayyum? Abtizan Mohammed? Cliff Woodcraft? Alex Diamond? Kate McDonald? Paul Turpin? Ian Auckland? Steve Ayres?
Vote.
Christine Gilligan? George Lindas-Hammond? Josie Pazcheck? Terry Fox? Anne Murphy? Tony Downing? Kevin Oxley? Peter Garbutt? Marouf Ralph? Alison Teale? Ben Miskel? Jack Scott? Sophie Wilson? David Barker? Mike Drabble? Dawn Dale? Peter Price? Gary Weatherall? Mike Chaplin? Tony Dams? Jane Dunn? Vicky Priestley? Richard Williams? Lewis Chin Chen?
Can you repeat that, please?
Julie Growcott? Francine Johnson? Ben Curran? Bernard Little? Alan Hooper? Mike Leveray? Anne Whitaker? Mick Rooney? Jackie Soutter? And Paul Wood? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
A is carried and B is lost. I'm now going to move to the... Oh, just on that. I'm now going to move to the vote on the substantive. Are members happy to vote on the motion as a whole or in each separate paragraph? Can you please indicate? As a whole? Yes? All those in favour, please show hands. I think that's not quite as... Okay. Any against? Any abstentions? Thank you. That's carried. Item number 12, update code of conduct for members. This will be formally because it's now 10 to 6. This item of business is to approve the recommendations in the report of the Director of Legal and Governance and Monitoring Officer requesting that the council adopt and update members' code of conduct following agreements with the Audits and Standards Committee to adopt the Local Government Association Model Code of Conduct, incorporating elements of the current code of conduct. The report was published with the agenda for this meeting and the proposed new code of conduct is appended to the report. The motion to adopt and update the code of conduct is to be moved by... Oh, it's just old deputy Lord Mayor.
Oh, formally, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Growcott?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. All those in favour of the motion, please raise hands. Any against? Any abstentions? That's carried. Item 13, representation, delegated authority and related issues. It is moved that councillor Tony Dams, seconded by Gary Weatherall, that the approval to be given to the changes in membership of committees, et cetera, the appointment of representatives to serve on external bodies and related issues as detailed in the schedule circulated at this meeting. Councillor Dams?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Weatherall?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
I'm now going to move to the... Sorry, I'm now going to move to the vote on this motion. Somebody's talking. All those in favour of the motion, please raise hands. Thank you. Any against? Any against? That was carried, thank you. We've nearly come to the end, if you're feeling uncomfortable, but as councillor Terry Fox mentioned earlier about Patricia Dine and the memorial service this morning, I would have loved to have gone to that. Pat Midgley was a close friend to every single member of this council, every single member of this council. And from the office, we did write a letter saying that, sorry, I couldn't go, but if you do know the family and you speak to them, please send my love, because it is deeply hurt. Thank you. So, having said that, thank you for your attendance, and have a good evening and a great weekend. Take care.